Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Nestled in a classic New England setting amid 200-year-old elm trees and charming colonial homes, stately seacapains homes, and charming Cape Cod salt boxes, Shoreway Acres is a graceful blend of Cape Cod's past and present. Shoreway Acres, proud sponsor of Falmouth Community Television.
Green Harbor Waterfront Lodging is nestled in a woodland setting on a picturesque ocean inlet. Green Harbor offers a family waterfront vacation. Enjoy our private boating beach with dock, rowboats, and paddle boats, oversized heated outdoor pool, and kiddie pool. Relax in our waterfront and beachside accommodations. 548-4747, or gogreenharbor.com. People think that a locally owned and operated appliance store may not offer what they need. Actually, we have trained and dedicated sales associates, expert delivery and installation, professional repair service, and personal customer service. Plus, we have access to a huge local warehouse with over 6,000 models in stock. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@al.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
The Quarter Deck Restaurant located on Main Street in the heart of Falmouth, specializing in fresh local seafood and other classic American cuisine, featuring a full bar with friendly staff. And the Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar located in North Falmouth just off Nathan Ellis Highway, featuring catering services with two full event rooms serving up classic Italian cuisine. The Quarter Deck Restaurant and Bucatino Restaurant and Wine Bar, we're here to serve all our friends in Falmouth.
Okay. Welcome. Good evening. Welcome to the joint meeting of the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee being held on June 15, 2020. Just for efficiency's sake, I will call the Board of Selectment meeting to order with a roll call of the members of the Board who are present and the members of staff who are present for this meeting. And then the Finance Committee will call their meeting to order as well. Just a reminder that because we are doing this virtually, and I'll read the full list of instructions as we go forward, but just a reminder that all votes have to be roll call votes to just make sure we accurately record the votes that each Board takes. So if you'll just state your name and then present, or when you do your vote, state your name and either aye or nay for your votes. And that way, we'll be sure that we have an accurate record as we go forward. So for the Board of Selectment, or the Select Board, English Braga present. Brown?
Brown present.
Okay. Jones?
Jones present.
Patterson?
Patterson present.
Taylor?
Taylor present.
And for staff, we have the Town Manager Julian Suso who is present. We have Peter Johnson Staub who is present, Assistant Town Manager, and we have Jennifer Mullen as well who is present. And of course, our IT staff that is always present and helping us troubleshoot any problems that we have. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Schwagel, so you can call your Board to order.
Okay. Thank you very much. For the Finance Committee, Peter Hargraves?
Peter Hargraves present.
Nick Lowell?
Nick Lowell present.
Jim Marnell?
Jim Marnell present.
Joe?
Bill Lemay present.
James?
Newman present.
Deb McGuire?
Deb McGuire present.
Ron Dreyer?
Unmute, Ron.
He had not unmute.
Present.
There he is. Okay. And then Sue Smith?
Sue Smith present.
I saw Judy earlier, but I don't see her now. Judy Magnani? She, I don't see her up. Do you see her, Megan?
She's not up.
I see that her name is there, but I see her muted and I don't see a picture. So we can maybe, if someone, one of the IT folks can just let us know if we are able to get Judy online. But you definitely have a quorum, I believe, even without Judy. So we'll go forward and hopefully we can connect her so she can be part of the votes as we continue.
Okay.
So what I'll do now, if it's okay, and I'll be reading this on behalf of both Boards, just for the sake of timeliness, is I'll just be reading the introduction to remote meeting. We've been reading this at the beginning of each meeting because clearly sometimes folks, you know, haven't watched any of these remote meetings. We want to make sure they understand the process going forward. So, "This open meeting of the Select Board and the Finance Committee, being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. This order does not require public participation, except for certain regulatory matters requiring a public hearing. At the discretion of the Chair, a method for public participation may be provided for matters that do not require it under this order. For this meeting, the two Boards are convening by video conference via Zoom app. This meeting is also broadcast on Channel 15 and streamed online at www.fctv.org. For those who wish to view the meeting but do not wish to participate, we suggest viewing on FCTV. Members of the public who wish to make comments or ask questions during the meeting may join the meeting as Zoom attendees." Which allows you to submit written comments and questions via the chat function, and also to see and hear the meeting in real time. Please note that there is a time lag between the real-time Zoom online and the FCTV video, whether viewed on cable TV or streamed online. The link and instructions for joining the meeting are listed in the agenda which is posted on the Town website. For more detailed instructions on how to use the chat function, please go to the Town website and enter Zoom instructions in the search box at the top of the page. This meeting is being recorded, and some individuals who have been invited to make a presentation are also participating via video conference. For those of us participating as panelists on the video conference, please be aware that you can be seen and heard unless you have muted your microphone and/or disabled the camera. Panelists are asked to mute their mics except when speaking and attempt to minimize background noise in your location to maintain audio quality. Also be advised, open windows on your computer could be broadcast if you hit the screen share button, which would mean anything captured in this Zoom conference from your computer could be broadcast and recorded. All the materials from this meeting have been provided to members of the body, and all of those are available on the Town website unless otherwise noted. For this meeting, the packet can be found on the Select Board page by clicking on the Select Board's Meeting Packages tab on the bar menu on the left. So let me just quickly, I'll just quickly go through the ground rules. As Chair, I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. I did speak with Chair of Finance Committee over the weekend, and we talked about what would just make this run as smooth as possible, given the large number of participants. And so, I will just, I can see everybody. I will call out if anybody has their hand raised after we hear from Jennifer Mullen. If anyone wants to make a comment, please just raise your hand, and we'll kind of try to keep it in an orderly fashion so we can fit in as many comments as possible. I will ask throughout, and Peter Johnson Staub is keeping track, if there are any public comments. So if someone's watching and they intend to make a public comment, you can certainly type it in the chat now and ask for it to be read when that subject matter comes up, or you can wait until we're addressing that specific subject matter. I think that is it for, just again, a reminder that we're going to do the roll, all votes will be via roll call. So if you wouldn't mind now, I know Doug Brown usually has, and he does tonight, has the American flag in his screen for us. If we could just rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's not the most graceful of pledges, but it's a little hard for everyone to be in sync in this way, but we're happy that we're able to do it. And we always thank Doug for making sure he has that available. So, thank you. I think what we'll do is we'll come back to recognition, announcement, and public comment so that we can get right into the meat of the joint meeting and talk about the vote transfers within the FY20 budget and vote for amended FY21 budget. So Jennifer, if I could turn it over to you?
Thank you, Megan, and good evening, everybody. It's good to see everybody. Haven't seen everybody, the Finance Committee, in a long time, so it's nice to see everybody's faces, although we are doing this a little differently. So just bear with me, I'm still getting used to Zoom. Thanks for gathering together tonight to look at, you know, to take care of business. So there's two issues that we'll be talking about, and one of them, and I'll just take them one at a time. So the first one is the FY20 budget transfers. So if everybody remembers, there was an article in the, it's still in there, the Town Meeting Warren, it was Article 16, and we transfer money around within the budget. And when we come up with those numbers, we're doing projections in February, when we were thinking that we were going to be at Town Meeting in April. So things have changed a lot since then. So the other way that you can transfer money within the budget in two ways, Town Meeting vote, or with the vote of the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee. And so, we've been looking at where we're in the deficit in some areas of the budget and felt that this was the best way to handle that. And that would be the first order of business, since we had to get together anyways for the budget and talk about FY20. So, in the last few months, we've had, you know, we've had COVID-19, and we've had expenditures, and we've been spending money on, you know, Plexiglas cleaning, you know, overtime, bringing people in in the Health Department. So, we've been expending a lot more than what we normally would. And so with that in mind, and some other issues, we have a transfer with the Fire Department, and dispatch, and solid waste, which would have been in the deficit anyways. We really approach it where we want the budget to fund itself. And so what I'm asking for is, is to transfer money from the Health Insurance line item, because we have sufficient money in there, into these other line items, just so they're not in the negative at the end of the year.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Are you going to put up your slides just for the public to see? I know you included them in our packet.
Yeah, Tom was going to do that. I should have probably mentioned that. There we go.
That's okay. I just, I think they're very helpful for folks at home to see. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm looking off to the side, and he did say he was going to do that. So, all right. So, we're taking on the FY20. So this is, so let's sit on this slide for a second. So we're transferring fund between line items, and we're going to do it with the vote of the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee. And we've updated the expenditures due to the COVID-19-related expenditures. We will not be in the deficit in the hole in the budget for FY20, because we will be moving money around. And we are seeking reimbursement for these expenses. And so the reimbursement is, when I look at all the revenue sources that we can act upon, like FEMA, the CARES Act, we will be asking for reimbursement in about, in the amount of about $600,000. So I want to let everybody know that we really are tracking these expenses. We're looking at what our future expenses are going to be, and the best way for those to be reimbursed. And so we're keeping a close eye on that. So, with that being said, can we go to the next slide? Okay. So some of this was already in the warrant booklet, and we were projecting at year-end. And so for legal, we're asking for $100,000. That is due to, a lot of that is Labor Council, because as you know, we bring outside counsel to handle our labor issues. The election budget is due to COVID-19, and we've had to bring in extra staff, because we mailed out the ballots and did a lot by mailing. And then during election, we had people cleaning, and Plexiglas, and things of that nature. The Fire overtime budget, we originally thought we were going to need about $400,000. That, I think, was in the warrant booklet. We need about $225,000. Dispatch, because of the turnover and things of that nature, we bring people in on overtime, so we'll need about $65,000 for the dispatch budget. The solid waste, those three line items, the fuel, we had a fuel escalator in there, but then we had a de-escalator, but we're still projecting to be in the negative in those line items, but that will be taken care of again in FY21. Clinics and nurses, we are asking, we are getting reimbursed for that. And a lot of these reimbursements, we don't know if they're going to come in this fiscal year or next fiscal year. That's why we want to cover these deficits this fiscal year. So, for clinics and nurses, because they've been tracking the COVID-19 cases and contact tracing, that will be in the negative about $30,000. The library budget, also, they've bought a couple COVID-related machines for contactless, when you take out books and things of that nature, and that was about $15,000. And then Plexiglas and things of that nature due to COVID, for when they reopen, is about $30,000. Recreation will be about $20,000 in the negative, and that's really due to our contract with Trane, when they, we had a new HVAC system put in there a couple years ago, and we pay Trane to actually track the savings, and it's a contract that we have them over 20 years. It just happens to be that line item will be in the negative. Pension, about $1,500, because we have a non-contrib person in the pension line item. Unemployment. So with unemployment, we haven't received an invoice from the state since March because of all the people that have been signing up for unemployment. And we do have a third-party claims administrator. So when we looked at all the names that have applied for unemployment, there's a significant amount. The Town didn't do any furloughs or lay anybody off. There's some hourly employees that aren't working, because they're not working the hours. But I think what's happening here is that you have two types of unemployment. You have unemployment that, you know, when you're laid off, or you're fired, you can apply for unemployment, and you get the unemployment through the state. Now with COVID-19, if you don't qualify for regular unemployment, you go to pandemic unemployment, which is something completely different. So what we think is happening, are people are applying for unemployment that are just not eligible, so they get rejected, so they can apply for the pandemic unemployment. So this, since we haven't received a bill, this is just a projection of what we think we might be in the negative, considering all the claims of the, the names of the people that we have. Probably won't need that much, but I want to be clear about that line item. We just want to make sure it's covered. And the Medicare tax, we're a little short there, and basically what that is, is as more and more people get off not paying Medicare to pay Medicare tax, I think the cutoff date was like in the 80s. We just shortened that line item, but I put sufficient money in there next year, and we should be okay. So does anybody have any, oh, and so let's just stay on that for a minute before we get to the FY21 budget, because it's really two totally different issues. If anybody has any questions on the transfers? No? Do you want to take the vote now on this, Megan, or do you want to take the vote on this at the end?
I think what we'll do is let's hear the other presentation, and then Keith and I talked about this over the weekend as well. We'll sort of do it in the order we normally would, which is the Board, the Select Board will vote, and then send it to the Finance Committee for their vote.
Okay.
And I just want to note for the record that since we checked in with who was here, also Charlotte Harris is present, and Judy Magnani is present, and I, and we can see her on the screen. So just for the record, to reflect, both of those members of the Finance Committee are in attendance. So.
Charlotte's not here, it's Mary.
Mary, I'm sorry, just, I know, I'm looking at Mary's face, but it comes up with Charlotte. Sorry. Sorry, Mary. So, for the record, those individuals, Mary Harris and Judith Magnani are both present. And we will definitely, you know, just be able to weigh in and have everyone ask questions if we just go through your next presentation, Jennifer.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay. So for the FY21 budget, you know, the question is, what is FY, well, let me back up. When we put the budget together for an April Town Meeting, we had a balanced budget. We presented it to the Board of Selectment, sent it to the Finance Committee, and everybody was, you know, happy with that. And as everybody knows, since then, things have drastically changed. And we are looking at a reduction in revenue estimates. Can we go to the next slide, please, Tom? Thank you. So I was looking at our revenue estimates for next year, and I'm being overly cautious with this. We know that there will be a reduction, and it's really hard to predict what we're looking at, particularly because when you look at what happened, everything happened so quickly. One day, we're all planning vacations for the summer, you know, we, you know, it's going to be a full summer on Cape Cod. We were going to get, you know, tax in from our seasonal rentals. The hotels were going to be full. And then all of a sudden, everything shut down, and the hotels shut down, and the restaurants shut down. And, you know, so it's been pretty volatile, and we've been looking at the revenues from week to week. When will things open up? And, you know, things just were always changing too, and how would you, you know, look at the projections? So, this is what I came up with. Like, again, I think I'm being overly cautious, and I think this is, we're in a good financial situation, that we don't have to, you know, cut services. We are going to cut the budget, but we don't have to cut services. And I think, you know, that's really a great thing, where you're looking at other communities do. So what I did was, I, now I'm reducing these amounts. So when we balance the budget, we have estimated local receipts, and you have all your estimates. And we usually bring in, in total, about $4 to $5 million more than what are in the estimated receipts. And that excess is what flows back to free cash. So when you're cutting the budget, you're cutting the estimates, but you realize you actually bring in more than that. So you're really giving yourself a buffer. So what I did was with motor vehicle excise, I brought the estimate down by $600,000. I don't know how fast the economy is going to recover, and maybe it might not need to recover that much at all. I know people are still buying vehicles. But the longer this goes on, and if we have another wave, and people are laid off, you know, people won't be buying cars in the, you know, in a slow economy, your motor vehicle excise goes down. So I took that down by about $600,000. The meals and the hotel motel, I reduced that by $860,000. We bring in, like, so far, I think we've got like $2.2 million, and we estimate $1.5. I was estimating $1.8 for next year, but I'm bringing it down to $1 million. Really being cautious with that line item, because as you know, the hotels haven't been even open, or Airbnbs, and also the restaurants are doing right now outside dining. What does that look like in the next six months? I don't know, but I'm being cautious with that. The other charges for services, I really looked at our gate receipts in July and August last year, and I cut that in half. So I cut that about $400,000. Licenses and permits, I just took that down a little bit, about $55,000, just to see if building permits slowed down and things of that nature. The libraries, they have a revolving fund that we estimate, and that will come down, because they've been closed about 15. The recreation department, we have, you know, summer recreation programs. They do them all year long. They haven't been doing them. I think there's going to be something scaled down. So I reduced that by $100,000. And also, investment income. Now, we were earning pretty good money on our investment income, but then the interest rates went down really low, and so I wanted to take some money off of that. So I took that down by about $210,000. So that was, I reduced the local estimated receipts. And then I was looking at state aid, and nobody really knows what's going to happen with state aid. We haven't heard anything from the state. I know the state hopes that they will get some money from the federal government in order to bridge that gap, because I know that their state, their receipts are really, are low. They've actually, you know, you don't have to file your taxes until July 15. So I took some money off of the Chapter 70 and the general government aid, which is the old lottery. So I reduced that about $772,000. Now, I do believe that the federal government's going to step in and maybe bridge that gap, but since we don't know that right now, I, when I'm funding the budget, I put in an additional $500,000 of free cash, just to be cautious on the reduction in state aid. I didn't feel that it was, I really felt like we needed to do some sort of cut in state aid right now. I wasn't comfortable not cutting state aid and hoping that the federal government would step in. So we reduced that about $772,000. Next slide, please. And so how are we going to, you know, really fund this? How would we make up that deficit? So for one year, we usually, we have a reoccurring revenue source for our reserves. And as you know, we've reached our, we reached our benchmark with our general stabilization fund. And so we haven't, we haven't needed to fund that. But we do have, I'm sorry, my dog keeps clawing at the door, so it's driving me crazy. So we're not going to fund the reserves for one year, and that's the capital program, the other post-employment benefits in the Workers' Comp Trust. Now, the capital program, we have, right now, we have over $4 million in that stabilization fund. So we'll be fine there. We're probably looking at a scaled down capital program in FY21 to see how free cash comes in. We have plenty of money in the Workers' Comp Trust, so we can take that down. And the OPEB, we will be transferring money into OPEB, but we just won't do it at this Town Meeting. I didn't have the warrant on, the article on the warrant. So the next Town Meeting, I do have monies that will be transferring into OPEB, but it won't be from the reoccurring revenue source. We also had $350,000 in the, that, when I projected the Upper Cape Regional Technical School budget, I projected it 10%. It came in like 2% or something, or, no, it was actually a reduction. So we had $350,000 of a buffer there. So we weren't using that, so we'll use that money. We'll reduce the health insurance budget by $500,000. Want to spend a minute on that. As you know, we've been transferring money out of health insurance to fund other areas of the budget for a number of years, because the health insurance is so volatile. I mean, one year, you might have 12% increase, and then the next year, you might have a 6%, or you might have a 2%. I've always tried to fund it a little bit. I've always tried to fund it a little bit. If, when it's a 12% or a 10%, I can't put that much money in it. So we usually fund it around 6 or 7% and then we've actually been able to take that down. So the last two years, we've had 0% increases. Last year, we voted in a 2% increase in this budget. This year is 0%. So we can very comfortably reduce that line item by 500,000. Now, if we have a terrible snow year and I, you know, and we overextended the snow budget, might be a little bit trickier, but we, we can comfortably reduce that line item. And then again, we'll use 500,000 in free cash for one year only to partially offset the reduction in state aid. So that's how we're going to make that up. And, you know, as I look forward and I try to project what might happen, I think we all do that. And how the economy is, is going to recover, when it will recover. I mean, I think I might be more concerned about 2022 and the recovery in 2021. But what this town meeting does and what this, and the budget does is when, once we go to town meeting and we can put these articles behind us, we'll be able to set our tax rate and get our tax bills out. And that's my biggest concern. We want to make sure that we can continue operations without any hiccups, especially where people can't meet. People who can't meet for town meeting, they have to go to DOR and fund it 112. If you do that, you have to ask permission to spend more. We have large debt service payments in July. We need to make sure we have the, the cash flow, which we do. So going to town meeting will definitely help us with that and we'll be good with operations for, for the next fiscal year. Can you move to the next slide, please? Thank you. So I mean, I'm open for questions. These are really the votes. So the first vote, you know, like you discussed with Keith, you have the select board vote and then a finance committee vote. So I, I'm here for questions or however you want to handle it, Megan.
Great, thank you very much, Jen. So if folks just want to, you know, raise their hand and jump in if they have a question for Jennifer, something they want her to clarify.
Megan, this is Peter Johnson's tab. There were, there was a question about unemployment insurance.
Yes, I saw that. Yeah, Deb McGuire was asking, let me just go back and you may have seen it, Jennifer, but I'll just ask it. Deb McGuire was asking, I thought there would be no chargeback for unemployment insurance. Sue Smith was noting that she believes that the town works differently from private unemployment. Could you just speak to that piece, please?
Sure, we're fully in, we're self-insured. So private employers pay insurance, unemployment insurance, and we actually pay the claims. So that's the difference.
Anyone else, any other questions? Were there any other questions? Okay, Doug Jones?
Yep. I was going to make a motion.
Okay, any other questions from anyone else before we have a motion? Okay, so from the Board of Selectmen, go ahead, Doug.
I would move that we, I would make a motion to move 666,500, 500 from health insurance to the line items as listed by the finance director.
Okay, do I have a second?
Patterson, second.
Great, and if we could do Jones and Patterson for our motions tonight, if, unless you have an objection to a motion, just to make it smooth. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the Board of Selectmen? Okay, all those in favor by roll call, English Braga, aye. Brown? Just, there you go.
Sorry, Brown, aye.
Okay, Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye, and then we send, send this to the finance committee for their deliberation.
Correct. You just need to unmute yourself, Keith.
You can also hold down the spacebar.
Got it, got it. Am I on now? Okay, for the finance committee, I move 666,500 from the health insurance to the line items listed on the chart.
I'll second.
Thank you. So Hargraves?
Hargraves, aye.
Lowell?
Lowell, aye.
Marnell?
Jim Marnell, aye.
Joe Lemay?
Lemay, aye.
James Newman?
Newman, aye.
Deb McGuire?
McGuire, aye.
Ron Dyer?
Dyer, aye.
Sue Smith?
Smith, aye.
Magnani?
Mignani, aye.
Mary Harris?
Harris, aye.
Kishwagel, aye.
Great, thank you. Next, we have the vote on the second piece of this. Any discussion about the second component of what Jen presented? Any discussion from either board? Okay, do I have a motion from the select board?
I'm chair, I moved that a recommendation of a total operating budget of 139,231,499 to the finance committee for their consideration.
Patterson, aye.
Are you seconding that, Ben? Thank you, Sam. Any further discussion, seeing none? English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Son? Great, and Jones?
Jones, aye.
Okay, so we'll turn it over to finance committee for their review.
Thank you. So for the finance committee, the motion is move the reduction of line item 250 health insurance and the amount to 500,000 for a health insurance appropriation of 15,85,305 and further move a total fiscal year 2021 operating budget of 139,231,499.
Smith's.
Second.
Thank you. Hargraves?
Hargraves, aye.
Lowell?
Lowell, aye.
Marnell?
Jim Marnell, aye.
Joe Lemay?
Lemay, aye.
James Newman?
Newman, aye.
McGuire?
McGuire, aye.
Dyer?
Ron Dyer, aye.
Sue Smith?
Smith, aye.
Judy Magnani?
Mignani, aye.
Mary Harris?
Harris, aye.
Kishwagel, aye.
Great, thank you. And Jennifer, thank you for putting that together and walking folks through all of that. Obviously, I think it goes without saying, as, you know, difficult as it is to sometimes have these meetings in this virtual setting, you know, if that's what we're confined to in the coming months, I think it'll be important for this select board and finance committee to continue to meet and really think about some of the challenges that, you know, we have coming for us and, you know, ahead of us in the coming year or two and think about ways that we can address those. So just a huge thanks to everyone. And I do see one last comment from Nick Lowell. Jennifer, could you explain the FY 2020 snow and ice expenditure for this year? Was the appropriation sufficient to cover the costs and will there be a turn back?
Yes, there was sufficient money to cover the cost for this year and there will be a turn back. I didn't look and see what that turn back would be. I can get that information to you, but yeah, the appropriation was sufficient this year, which is great.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much to the finance committee. Thank you, Jennifer, and we will hopefully see everyone not on a screen in the not-too-distant future. Maybe a really giant room with, with some megaphones so that we can be in person. But thanks to everyone, I hope everyone stays healthy and safe. We appreciate it.
Monday night.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Do we need to make a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
We need to make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, so I'll make a motion for the finance committee to adjourn this meeting.
I second that.
Okay, thank you.
I think Keith, you just have to vote it.
Oh, okay, we're going to go through. Hargraves?
Hargraves, aye.
Nick Lowell?
Aye.
Kim Marnell?
Kim Marnell, aye.
Joe Lemay?
Lemay, aye.
James Newman?
Jim Newman, aye.
Deb McGuire?
Deb McGuire, aye.
Ron Dyer?
Ron Dyer, aye.
Sue Smith?
She says aye, we can see you.
Judy Magnani?
Mignani, aye.
Mary Harris?
Harris, aye.
Great.
Kishwagel, aye.
Thank you, we'll see, we'll see you on Monday.
Bye, bye.
Thank you. Take care, thank you. And IT will help expedite them getting logged off. And while we're doing that, let's just return back to our agenda. Doug Brown, did you have anything in particular for recognition?
Well, this week I just think I'd just like to recognize our town staff, who I think have responded so professionally during this crisis. And thanks to our town manager for pushing the paving contractor to get Main Street ready. So I just really think that we're responding well to this and I appreciate the work that all of our town workers are doing. And it's, it's really impressive, so thank you.
Great, yes, Sam, and then Nancy.
Yes, I, I wanted to give recognition to our town manager and the school superintendent Laurie Deward and many of the staff members and Megan for putting out that statement in support of the protesters in looking at the whole issue of police overreaching and management. I thought it was a very well-crafted statement and it represented the humanity of our population. So thank you for, for putting that together and putting it out. It showed up in the Falmouth enterprise.
Great, thank you. Nancy?
Just two quick things. One, definite thank you to Mr. Suso for keeping us up to date on the process of the licensing. That was, his information was very helpful. And secondly, to congratulate Karen Delaney, who has been named the Director of the Falmouth Service Center. Thank you to Brenda Swain for her work and congratulations to Karen.
Yes, great, great point. And Karen has been really, along with all the other folks there, you know, just doing such incredible work during this really, you know, unbelievably challenging time where they're not only having, you know, more folks who need their services, but they're also having, having to think about different ways to deliver those services and to do something that they've never done before. So all of the folks, the volunteers and the staff, they're really amazing. So we're looking forward to hearing about some of the ways that we can continue to support them. And we have any announcements? I just have one, just for the public, I mean, for this board, just to, you know, people, we've been getting so many emails because there's just so much going on. And sometimes folks will say, I only heard back from Doug Brown or only heard back from Sam or, you know, one person. And I just want to make sure that people understand that because of open meeting law, we can't have a situation where each one of these members of the board weighs in and gives you a response and shares their thoughts or opinions. So really the way that it works is in general, either sometimes someone from staff will respond. And then otherwise often either the chair or the vice chair will just respond and try to direct it to a staff member if that's appropriate. It doesn't mean that each one of the other members of this board hasn't read it. They have, I can assure you, this is a board that reads all of the correspondence. But it is certainly a situation where we just cannot have an ongoing conversation through email about subject matter, because again, it would be a violation of open meeting law. So just for the public to understand that and just to really be patient with the fact that generally the way that we can all weigh in is if we then take whatever your concern is and put it on the agenda. And that happens quite frequently. Someone will raise an issue, one of us might weigh in and say, we'll get that on an agenda, you know, in the coming future. And that, once it's on the agenda and it's publicly posted, then all of us can weigh in. So just, just a reminder to the public that that's generally the way it works. Okay, do we have anything for public comment, Peter? I don't see anything at present, but maybe. And has anybody received an email that someone has asked to be read into public comment?
Megan, we have not yet received any public comment via chat.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so what we'll do is we will move into some committee interviews and appointments. So what we'll do is we'll start, we'll just do it in order here because that will be the easiest for IT to bring these individuals in. So first, under regulatory boards, we have Board of Health. And so if we can bring in both of those individuals, Mr. Van Moy and Kevin Kroger. Let me see their name, there we go. Ben?
Yep.
Welcome.
Thank you, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, great.
Great.
We'll just see if we can get Kevin in there. So these are for, this is for an appointment that is, if anyone has it closer at hand, let me just see. Board of Health.
For June 30th of 2023.
Great, thank you. And if you just want to tell us a little bit, I mean, you're, you've already got some experience, but just why you're interested in continuing on?
Oh yeah, I, I, it's been a real privilege to be on the board the last couple of years. I've had a partial term. I took over when John Waterbury stepped aside. So I have two years under my belt and just have immense confidence in health agent Scott McGann and, and chair, chairperson Diana Malloy. Anyway, they've really helped kind of get me on board with the, with the, with the Board of Health. And I just really enjoy the breadth of topics that we cover and, and the challenges of all the, seems like every agenda item that comes up is an intellectual challenge. And I, I really enjoy, I enjoy that part of it. And I feel like I do have things to, to contribute to the bait, to, to the debate. And I also have had the opportunity to bring a couple of things kind of forward. You know, side regulation.
Sorry, your feed, your feed sort of stuttered for a moment, so.
Okay.
But we heard you say you brought some things forward that were then taken, that the Board of Health was able to take a look at.
Yeah, right. And for example, along with Kevin, who's going to be on the call here soon, if he's not already, we brought up the issue of glyphosate use in town and had a moratorium on that that lasted for a year. Unfortunately, it expired just as the COVID crisis broke out and we had a suspension in our meetings for a number of weeks. So we're prepared to take that up again soon. But what it did do was bring about a very broad discussion about use of pesticides in town. And so that was a real learning experience and something that I do think was eventually going to have a positive outcome for the community. So anyway, I'm just really enjoying my time on it and I, I do feel like I've contributed to the board and also I've brought a few things forward that I think the board has been interested in and will have an impact.
Great, thank you. Well, I, I know that this board thinks highly of all the work that the Board of Health is doing and you've come, certainly came in right in the middle of some really, you know, pivotal between triple E and now this. There's been a lot, a lot on the plate of the Board of Health in the last year. Do I have any questions from the board? And if not, do I have a motion?
I would move to appoint Benjamin Van Moy to a Board of Health term ending June 30th, 2023. Jones?
Patterson, second.
Okay, any further discussion, seeing none? Roll call vote, English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye, and I will point out that for Mr. Kroger, we do have to interview him. As a regulatory member, we have to hold the interview to be able to point them.
Yes, thank you for that reminder. And I don't, Pete, so congratulations, Ben, we really appreciate it. We appreciate all the work that you do. Do we have, Peter Johnson Staub, do we have any knowledge if Kevin is having trouble getting on or if tonight just didn't work for him?
I'm told that he was on the Board of Health meeting Zoom call earlier this evening. We have not had any communication from him since then.
That's fine, if he, that's fine. We will either carry this to another agenda if he's not able to interview with us tonight or if he is able to log on at some point in time, we will take that up. So if anybody has his, a good way to contact him and can let him know to, if he's able to, to log in, we will take that up. Once he comes in, Peter, if you could just let us know, we will certainly, you know, put him in line after whatever we're finishing up.
We'll keep an eye out for him.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, take care, we'll see you soon, I'm sure. All right, for Conservation Commission, we have a few things going on. We have, I think what we're going to do is we're going to start with Mark, if he is present. Mark Gurney. My understanding is that Mark would like to become an alternate. Let's see, there he is. Hi, Mark, how are you? Oh, we can't hear you, even though you aren't muted for some reason. Maybe IT can try and troubleshoot. Still can't hear you. So, let's do it this way. Can, do you see how you can type into the chat? So, maybe if you can type into the chat, my understanding is that you are gonna spend some time out west with family. So, maybe you're looking to have an alternate position, if that's accurate. If you could just type in the chat, and we can do it this way. We'll get around these technical difficulties. Looks like we still, maybe can, why don't we do this? It looked like we had Kevin for a minute. Maybe if IT could get Mark on even a phone line so that we could at least hear him. It doesn't have to be a long interview, but we at least have to hear his voice. So, if IT could work to help Mark with that, and we will get back to that. It looked like we had Kevin for a moment. I see his box here, so if we could let him in. Hi, Kevin. How are you?
Good. How about you?
Great. Thank you for joining us. I know that you just wrapped up another meeting, so.
Yep.
We won't keep you long, but we saw that you've obviously put your name forward to extend your position on the Board of Health for a term that ends 6/30/23. And does anyone have any questions? We're all pretty familiar with the work that the members of the Board of Health, Kevin being one of them, have been engaged in. Go ahead, Doug.
You're not exhausted by this year?
You know, our health agent has really been doing vast majority of the work on this. So, no, I still got, still got more.
If after this year, you still have energy, it's good enough for me.
Perfect.
We're challenged by more than septic system approvals. I know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're, you're really just probably longing for the days when it was complicated septic issues, right? That's, that seems like a quaint, quaint past.
It is very.
So, no questions from the board?
I would appoint Kevin Kroger to the Board of Health term ending June 30th, 2023.
Patterson, second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, by roll call, English Braga, aye. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Great. Thank you so much, Kevin, for jumping on. That way, we can, we can have that done. There won't be any disruption in the work that you guys are doing.
All right. Thanks very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Take care.
We've had a great interview with Mr. Gurney.
Yeah.
Good enough for me.
Yes, I, as long as, I just want to make sure I am clear that he definitely wants to move to an alternate position. Because I don't want to do that unless that's what he wants. So, if we can, maybe we'll, maybe we'll jump over to Steve for a moment. How are you, Steve?
Good. Thanks, Steve.
Good. So, are you looking to continue in the alternate position?
I'm not an alternate. I'm a full member.
I'm sorry. That's right. I remember we did that. So, you're looking for no change in that position, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Do anyone, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Patton? He's been on the board for a while. He started as an alternate and has been in the full position for a little while now. So, any questions for him?
What's the trickiest decision you guys have handled this year?
We actually have one right now, where people are abandoning a swimming pool, and they want a minimal addition to a deck in exchange for the swimming pool. And we have to evaluate whether this is a minimalist, it's actually a 12 by 16 deck. It's a small, well, that's a fairly large deck, but only four square feet of it are in the A-zone. We have to decide whether the trade-off is more important than the regulation. And I think it's gonna be an interesting discussion. That's been a tough one.
I would move, we appoint Stephen Patton to the Conservation Commission, term ending June 30th, 2023.
Patterson, aye. A second.
Okay. Sorry, you can stay right there. I have a motion, a second, seeing no further discussion. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
English Braga, aye. Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to continue to serve. We really appreciate that.
And we appreciate Counselor Patterson's continuing presence at our meetings, even in Zoom. He's a real, he gives it all.
I think you, I think you just, you just promoted me. Full member.
Yeah, poor counsel. Your Worcester, your Worcester was coming out. Councilman, that's right. Happens to the best of us. Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay, see you.
See you later. Do we have Mr. O'Brien present?
He may be listed as Ms. O'Brien on the attendees.
Yep. So, if we could promote, if, yep, there we go. And we can let Mr. Patton go, so he can. Okay.
We have, we do have two O'Briens on your agenda for appointment.
There's a Kevin O'Brien.
Yes, right now, we're looking for Kevin, because Kevin is listed under Conservation.
Right.
So, I don't know. Do you have a Kevin available? Unless Ms. O'Brien wants to take on both, but probably not.
No, we do not appear to have Kevin O'Brien on the call.
Okay. Could we just, what would be really easy is if we could just find out, if someone could just, whomever is speaking with Mr. Gurney could just find out, and you can just tell us if he would like to become an alternate. Yes, he does.
Was he a full member before this?
Correct. And my understanding is that. Yes, we can hear you.
My situation is rather uncertain for the next couple of years. It's a health issue. And I thought it would be probably safest for me to become an alternate.
Right.
I expect to take all the meetings as I have in the past, except for some block maybe, but an alternate might be a better position for me.
Great. Thank you. Well, just the fact that you are willing to navigate this technical snafu is probably enough to get anyone on any committee, never mind all the work that you've been doing on the commission. So, unless anyone has any questions for Mr. Gurney.
We appoint Mark Gurney as an alternate to the Conservation Commission, term ending June 30th, 2023. Jones?
Patterson, second.
Okay. Seeing, any further discussions? Seeing none, English Braga, aye. Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Brown?
Brown, aye.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Gurney. Sorry for that. We really appreciate you working with us, and best of health. We appreciate you continuing to be on the commission.
That's okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really, the Conservation Commission, they're hardworking people. They have to go out and do all kinds of site visits during the daytime, as well as doing weekly meetings, virtually weekly meetings throughout the year.
It's a lot of heavy lifting, and certainly as, you know, resources become more threatened or, you know, land is sort of scarcer as it changes, obviously a lot of challenges. So, we really appreciate folks doing that work. We will figure out the situation with Kevin O'Brien. Same type of situation, Peter. If he shows up, if you could let me know, we'll jump over to interviewing him. Otherwise, we'll put it on our upcoming agenda and deal with it then. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, next, for, now we can bring in Susan O'Brien, who has applied for a position on the Affirmative Action Committee.
We're still the Zoning Board of Appeals with Mr. Zelinski.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, Mrs. O'Brien is here. Ms. O'Brien is here. So, we'll do that, and then we'll go back and do the Zoning Board of Appeals, if that's okay. Welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight. We saw the application that you put in. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. O'Brien for, after taking a look at her application?
No, I think I'm thrilled that she's applied. I think she'll be a great addition to that committee, and I'm happy to, Ms. Taylor does.
Oh, yes. Go ahead, Nancy.
Just quickly, that I'm thrilled, Sue O'Brien, that you're willing to take this on, having worked with you, and also seeing that you're part of the social justice piece at Falmouth High School. So, thank you. I'm thrilled.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you know, your resume was, it was okay. You know, when we look, when I look at something like this, and it just keeps going on for a couple of pages, it's like, you know, we would be so foolish not to absolutely rope you in to whatever we could rope you in for. So, thank you. We really appreciate it. And it's a great committee. As I'm sure you know, great group of individuals working. We really appreciate it.
Susan O'Brien to the Affirmative Action Committee, term ending June 30th, 2023. Jones?
Patterson, aye. A second.
Okay. And any further discussions? Seeing none, English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thanks very much. Have a great night.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye. Okay, we'll go back to, there we go. We can bring in Mr. Zelinski for Zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome. Just have to unmute yourself.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. So, this is for a position that ends 6/30/2025. So, a bit of a long haul here that you're signing up for. We've also had, obviously had the paperwork that you turned in for this. Are there any questions from the board for Mr. Zelinski? No? Okay. Just moving over here, I just want to make sure I have all the paperwork in front of me. Okay. So, seeing no questions and that you're willing to, for this five-year period, to work and do work for the ZBA, which obviously is another committee, another board that has very heavy lifting. I think that we are in a position that we can take a vote, if folks feel comfortable?
As long as I'm not too confused as to whom we're appointing.
Yeah.
I think you'll go by the name Scott, but your name actually is Edwin. I just want to make sure we're appointing correctly.
That, that's correct. My, my legal name is Edwin P. Zelinski.
I think that's who we have to appoint. So, I would just move that we appoint Edwin Zelinski, the second to the Zoning Board of Appeals, to term ending June 30th, 2025.
Patterson, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, by roll call, English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Sam?
Patterson, aye.
Sorry. Jones?
Jones, aye.
Thank you very much, Scott. We really appreciate it.
Thank you all, and I appreciate your faith in me. I enjoy it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Take care.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay. Next, for our Commission on Substance Use, Maro Titus.
Hi.
Welcome. Hi, how are you?
Can you hear me okay?
We can, yes. Great. Thank you. So, we have your paperwork as well, and we are thrilled to have an addition to this committee. It does a lot of important work, and it's gone through some transition in the last year. Do we have any questions at all from Titus?
No, I'm just thrilled that we're getting somebody else to the legal room voters.
I've been a member for a few months now.
More people between boards.
That's how I got involved in this commission, in addition to having a background in behavioral health. So.
Yes, we saw that in your, in your paperwork. So, we really appreciate that. That's great.
I'm excited to join them. They're doing a lot of really good work on the commission.
Definitely. Any questions at all? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion?
I was just trying to remember what, what's our name, this commission now?
Commission on Substance Use.
Commission on Substance Use.
I would move, we appoint Maro Titus to the Commission on Substance Use, term ending June 30th, 2022. Jones?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Again with the commission. Take care.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, now we have for Cultural Council, Kathy Rosnick?
Pretty good. You did pretty well.
Sorry.
It's Rosnick. It's okay.
Rosnick, sorry.
You did really, really well.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have your paperwork that you submitted. Any questions? Okay. I think we have, do we have two spots available?
I think there are, yeah.
We actually have three, and I'm just trying to remember. How many, we have two different dates listed for our term until, so I'm trying to remember how many we have for each term. One's an unexpired term, and then the regular term is still, I think two of them are until the 23rd.
I believe.
I would move that we appoint Kathy Rosnick to the Cultural Council, term ending June 30th, 2023.
Patterson, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, by roll call, English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great. Really, we thank you. This is definitely a council that has sometimes struggled to keep a full, you know, full board of folks to be able to weigh in and really do all the things that this group can do when they have everyone there. So, we really appreciate you stepping up and.
Oh, yeah. I'm happy. Looking forward to it.
Yeah, new energy and passion to it. So, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. We should have, do we have Lance Norris?
We do not.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm just saying that. My apologies. Okay. Okay, so now it looks like we have.
I have questions for the next four people also.
Okay, excellent. The other, those are all so easy. All right, we have for the Edward Marks Advisory Committee, Jean Pierre Ruiz. Do I, did I say your last name wrong?
Ryu is fine, if you can hear me.
Yes, we can. I'm sorry, Ryu. Welcome. So, what, we will start with Mr. Jones, says he has some questions.
So, have you actually been in the building yet?
I have not. I have a lot of interest in construction and also preserving some of the historical buildings. So, I look forward to visiting and seeing what's, what's being done.
This is a committee that ends very quickly, so we're half thrilled to get someone back on the committee, so I can move forwards. I'm sure Mr. Brown could attest to.
Okay.
Very active group, so you better be ready to go.
Absolutely. Looking forward to it.
And just to that, just to that point, Mr. Jones just reminded me, and we'll, we'll take this up officially at another meeting. It's likely that we may have to look at that endpoint for that committee, given that obviously they have been unable to do a lot of really important work since all the meetings were suspended. So, we'll take a look at, not that that relieves you of any pressure to be ready to go, but certainly we want to make sure that we get the most out of all the talent that's on this committee. So, we have your application. Any other questions?
I would move, we appoint Jean Pierre Ryu to the Edward Marks Building Advisor Committee, term ending December 31st, 2020, or however long we extended.
Great.
Patterson, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent. Next, we have Robert Pacheco for the Golf Advisory Committee. How are you?
Hi, folks. How are you?
Good. Do you say Pacheco or Pachico?
I say Pachico. You say Pacheco.
That's right.
My wife says Pacheco, too.
Yep.
She's more Portuguese than I.
Yes, we have, we have Pachicos and Pachecos in my family. So, they just, even when they're related, they don't agree on it sometimes. So.
It's crazy.
Welcome. We looked at your application. Certainly, you have a lot of experience. And let me start by asking if anyone here on the board has some questions. Go ahead, Doug.
Yep. Have you been on the course recently?
Yesterday and today.
So, what's, how is the Falmouth Country Club dealing with the regulations for COVID?
They seem.
This is sort of a PSA to get people out there, but to also understand that it is something being taken quite seriously by the golf courses.
It is. And, you know, they're doing a great job with it. The service staff over there is on top of things. They're all masked. They're sanitizing carts on their way in. They've got traffic flow through the building regulated. It's nice to have the practice facilities back open. And, and I, you know, I, I think, I think it's a great little jewel in the, in the town of Falmouth here.
Is the coursing good condition right now?
Yeah, it is pretty good. Yeah. It's not like Woods Hole. Yeah, it is pretty good. Yeah. It's not like Woods Hole, but it's, it's in good shape.
The price is a little different too, though.
Yeah.
Oh, for sure. What a great deal. Uh, I mean, I just joined this year. Uh, so uh, it, it's a very good uh, value, I would say.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Pacheco? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion?
We appoint Robert Pico to the golf advisory committee, term ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Patterson, second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great. Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Take care.
So long.
Okay, I see. It looks like we have Mr. O'Brien.
We do.
Do, yep, I see him. I just don't know if we'll end up having audio. Here we go. Can you hear us, Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, I can.
Wonderful. We can hear you. Well, thank you. We really appreciate you um, taking the effort to, to get in and join us. Um, my understanding is that um, you've been serving as an alternate and are willing to take on a full position. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay. Do we have any questions for Mr. O'Brien? Okay, obviously he's familiar with the work that the commission is doing and has that um, which is obviously great because you can hit the ground running as a full member. Okay. Seeing no questions. Do I have a motion?
I would move we appoint Kevin O'Brien to the conservation commission, full-time position, term ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Jones?
Patterson, second.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Thank you. All of that work for just that quick amount of time. We, we really, really appreciate it. Thank you so much for joining us.
So, thank you very much.
Take care. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, we have a couple more. We have um, Lee Drescher, her historical commission. I think she's present. I see her coming up.
Good evening.
Good evening. We, oh, there we go. Welcome.
I'm glad to be on. I, I found it a little tricky.
It, it is a struggle, especially the first few times, and then it sort of gets to be easier. But uh, we appreciate folks making that extra effort. It's definitely more cumbersome than just walking into town hall. So thank you. Um, any questions for Ms. Drescher? Doug?
Uh, we did receive a communication from the chair of the commission saying that they really are desperate to have an architect on because they, the last person who did resign was an architect. And according to the charter, we are supposed to request from the architect commissions in town nominees. And then if we can't get anybody within thirty days, we can then appoint anybody we want. I just wanted to bring that potential to the board.
Okay. And is this right now, this is the only position that's open? So this would technically be?
Uh, there are one full-time position and two alternate positions available.
Okay. So what I guess I would ask Ms. Drescher is, um, given that we do, we're going to have to probably advertise for an architect to see if there is anyone willing to um, fill that position. Um, what is your feeling about either waiting or taking an alternate position? Um, and seeing if we can fill the architect position that's required?
I am an alternate.
As the full-time.
I, I am. I am.
An alternate at present?
Yes.
Yes. So I guess I would, would, Doug, I didn't hear what you were saying. I'm sorry.
If, until we appoint someone in the other position, she would be serving as a regular member, as the alternate until we can actually fill it.
Okay. So, uh, so in other words, if you're going to continue to be in that position as a full member and will have to advertise to see if somebody is willing from one of the architectural firms to come on board. Um, and if not, then obviously you would maintain, you would be appointed um, for that full position um, going forward. It's kind of a quirk of the way that this commission is set up, but they are looking and we did hear from the chair that they have had that absence, as you know, as an alternate, because you've been participating. They have that absence of that voice from, and perspective from an architect.
Absolutely.
So I guess um, Mr. Jones, just in terms of, if you've seen this before, do we just hold this and we ha- we advertise for the architect? Is that what, when we've had these type of things in the past?
I think the most, the easiest thing is to appoint Lee as the alternate for now. Uh, advertise it and then we can change the appointment if we don't get someone to step forward. But if someone does step forward, then we appoint them as the full-time position and Lee just stays as the alternate. And in the interim, she would serve as the full-time anyway because the position's vacant.
Okay.
I am an alternate. So.
Yes.
Already an alternate. So.
But you'd be serving as a full member at present because there is a vacancy because they don't have that, that archi- that's normally filled by an architect that isn't filled at present.
Right. I understand. Okay.
I guess what Lee's saying is that we don't need to appoint her as an alternate because she already is one.
Right. So what, what makes sense is that we just put this out, if this is okay, Lee, only because we got the way in from the chair after you had put in your application, just to remind us about the issue with the architect. So if it makes sense, what we could do is advertise for the architect and then just look at your application again in light of whether or not we have somebody step forward for that position. Does that seem equitable?
That's fine.
Okay. So you did all that work to come on for us to say we're gonna kick the can. But um, I do think that uh, the commission generally does need that position filled. So uh, Mr. Susso, if we can, um, I think actually Diane Davidson already noted that she would put an advertisement in the enterprise um, and do that to make sure that we are clear that we're looking for someone to fill that position. And then we'll bring.
We're supposed to contact the Architect Advisory Board in the town of Falmouth and ask them for nominees.
Okay. So if we can do that, um, Mr. Susso, in short order, and then we'll bring Ms. Drescher back.
Will do.
Okay. Lee, sorry for the confusion. It was a last-minute email that we got um, today about that, just to remind us about the architect. So uh, we will be seeing you again um, in the not-too-distant future. And in the interim, we thank you for your work stepping in as a full-time member of that um, commission.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Do we know, do we know when Lee's term is up?
That's what I was gonna ask, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. Maybe, I think maybe two years because I came before you last year.
That's right. I think we still have time because it was a pretty recent appointment last year.
Mission usually has two alternates. So there is another alternate position that's also open with that term ending next year.
That's.
So, Mr. Susso, if we can just make sure we also, whenever we, if we do put an advertisement in the paper, in addition to reaching out, that we note there is also an alternate position, another alternate position available on this committee. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Drescher. Sorry for the confusion.
Uh, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. You too. Okay, for our last appointment tonight.
Who's this next guy? Does he know anything about water?
He has very questionable recommendations too. I don't know who these, this Peter McConerty and uh, Eric Turkington and Amy Lowell. I don't know about those kinds of, you keep that kind of company. Welcome. We uh, don't need much of an introduction. We certainly know uh, your experience and we're thrilled that you're putting in um, your application for water quality management. Doug, did you have a question for Steve?
Is he crazy? No, I'm sorry. I shouldn't, I should not be in jest. I just, I really appreciate him willing to, the years he gave in as an employee, then willing to be, come back as a volunteer is just tremendous.
Yeah. Thank you.
And Steve, weren't you on the original uh, Water Quality Management Review Committee?
I believe I was on the board sitting next to you for a period of time. Yes, sir.
Yes, I believe you were.
Welcome back.
It was my first love. I'm still interested in how we're gonna get, solve this over time. It's, it's a, it's a great puzzle and the town's got a lot of smart people that work on it. So I think we're there. We have been and will continue. So I'm proud to be back on the committee.
I would move we appoint Stephen Rafferty to the Water Quality Management Committee, term ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Jones?
Patterson, second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great. Thank you so much, Steve. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for your help.
For your time on the board of health.
Yes.
Easy work.
Thank you. Take care.
And, and just as a, just as a comment, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just to recognize the work that Virginia Valiala has done on this committee for the last ten years. Um, I just think it's important to recognize that and to welcome to speak back.
Yep. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Good point.
Okay, um, now we need to vote annual committee reappointments. Okay, so these are incumbents who've expressed interest in being reappointed and none of these seats are contested. And because these aren't regulatory boards, we can go ahead um, and appoint them. So um, I guess what I'll do is I'll read through and if um, maybe Sam Patterson, do you want to just second them? I'll read them as a motion if you second them. And um, we will just vote them individually as we go through. Can we do it as a block?
Sure. Could, I do have one question. I saw that Scotland Dell is in the audience, uh, I believe for this com- appointment. I did have a question for someone from the bike ways. If there's a way we could, I could ask that question as a quick interview for that, when we get to that board.
Absolutely. So we'll stop, when we get to Scotland Dell, we will stop. And if we could um, have Scott brought in um, at that point in time so that um, Mr. Jones can ask him a question.
Maybe it's a different Scott, but.
Okay. Um, if we can just confirm if that's Mr. Lindell. Okay. So let me start with affordable housing committee. We have one position, Pamela Harding Barrett for a term ending six thirty, twenty-three.
Patterson, second.
Okay. English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Agricultural Commission? Agricultural, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Sam.
Haven't we done these as blocks before to just make it a little bit more expeditious?
Um, I'm, I guess we probably can unless somebody wants to hold it. So I'll read through all of the names. If somebody has a concern, um, just let me know and we'll take that person out of order. Does that work? Okay, so I'll read through all of them then. Um, agricultural commission, Amy Vickers for a term ending six thirty, twenty twenty-three. Heidi Waltz, six thirty, twenty twenty-three. Jane Voss, six thirty, twenty twenty-three. Beach committee, one position. Paul Moskowski, six thirty, twenty twenty-three. Bicycle and pedestrian committee, five positions. Scott Lindell, six thirty, twenty twenty-three. Benjamin Harden, six thirty, twenty-three. Christopher Maguire, six thirty, twenty-three. Um, Edward T. Rowan, six thirty, twenty-three. Pamela Rothstein, six thirty, twenty-three. We'll come back and we can talk to Mr. Lindell, um, if he's present after. Building code board of appeals, Donald uh, Divney, six thirty, twenty twenty-five. Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, Samuel H. Patterson, six thirty, twenty-three. Commission on Disabilities, Francis Dupuis, six thirty, twenty-three. Mission on Substance Use, Kath, Kath Schillinger, sorry, Kath Schilling, six thirty, twenty-three. Samantha Bowers, six thirty, twenty-three. Community Preservation Committee, two positions. Russell Robbins, six thirty, twenty-three. Paul Glenn, six thirty, twenty-three. Sorry?
Hold.
Okay. So let's take out the, um, that was under community preservation, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll hold that, that committee. Won't be included in the vote that you take. Constable Tom Zine, six thirty, twenty-three. EDIC, Christopher Lann, six thirty, twenty-three. Michael Galasso, six thirty, twenty-three. Energy Committee, Alessandro uh, Pocencelli, six thirty, twenty-three. Okay. And Matt Patrick, six thirty, twenty-three. Golf Advisory Committee, two positions. Barbara Dixon, six thirty, twenty-three. Christopher, and I apologize, Inu, six thirty, twenty-three. Historical Commission, one position. Christian Valley, six thirty, twenty-three. Human Services Commission, Lawrence Lengler, six thirty, twenty-three. Rec Committee, three positions. Lori Dillon, six thirty, twenty-three. Sandy Cooney, six thirty, twenty-three. Scott Gelfey, six thirty, twenty-three. Jell Fish Advisory Commission, three positions. Daniel Ward, six thirty, twenty-three. David Heffernan, six thirty, twenty-three. David Bailey, six thirty, twenty-three. Solid Waste Advisory, four positions. Alan Robinson, six thirty, twenty-three. Christopher Pallone, six thirty, twenty-three. Mark Binnerim, six thirty, twenty-three, and Ruth Brazier, six thirty, twenty-three. Um, Steamship Authority Port Council, Robert Munier, six thirty, twenty-two. And Veterans Council, Kevin Casey, six thirty, twenty-one. Robert Fuess, six thirty, twenty-one. Randy Collette, six thirty, twenty-one. Water Qual- Quality Management?
Hold.
Excuse me. You want to hold up?
Please.
Okay. Waterways Committee, two positions. Jeffrey Thomas, six thirty, twenty-three. And E. Kevin King, six thirty, twenty-three. Certified Ware Cape Cod Aggregates, Linda DeVito, six thirty, twenty-one. Paul DeVito, six thirty, twenty-one. Ted Freeman, six thirty, twenty-one. Jennifer Quinn, six thirty, twenty-one. And Edward Boostfield, six thirty, twenty-one. And finally, Certified Wears Waste Water Treatment Facility, Charlie Pires, six thirty, twenty-one. Cruiser Keller, six thirty, twenty-one. Stephen Parsons, six thirty, twenty-one. Stephen Devonis, six thirty, twenty-one. Corey Melamed, six thirty, twenty-one. And Ronald McLaughlin, six thirty, twenty-one. So for those.
Patterson, second.
Okay. Um, any further, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none for those committees aside from water quality and commish- uh, sorry, and community preservation. Um, all those in favor, English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Hey, Taylor?
Aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Okay, so returning to um, Community Preservation Committee. Uh, Ms. Taylor?
Yes, I need to abstain from um, the vote for Russell Robbins on the CPC.
Okay. So with um, that in mind, I'm gonna vote, uh, or I would uh, accept a second for those motions?
Patterson, second.
Okay. Um, and I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. English Braga, aye. Uh, what we'll do is we'll do uh, Russ Robbins first. So for Russ Robbins, English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Abstain.
Okay. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Jones?
Jones, aye.
Okay. And for Paul Glenn, do I have a second?
Patterson, second.
Okay, so any further discussion? Seeing none. English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Hey, Taylor?
Aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Okay, um, I'm assuming under the similar situation for water quality management for Eric Turkington? Is that the situation, Nancy? Okay. So um, I'll take a motion for Eric Turk, a second for Eric Turkington?
Patterson, second.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Abstain.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Okay, and uh, for Matthew Charette, we have, uh, do I have a second?
Oh, Patterson, second.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Seeing none. Um, English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great. Thank you.
Scotland Dell in there, so we'll skip the bikes permission.
Okay. I do see that we have Lance Norris uh, present. So that's wonderful if we could bring him on.
Oh.
We can't see you, but we can hear you.
Oh, I, yeah, I think my, my computer is blocking the video for some reason.
That's okay. We, we will believe that you're Lance Norris because it says so. So we'll just give that credence. Welcome.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Norris? He was applying for cultural council.
Screen Actors Guild for thirty years, is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, when you couldn't quite read this very clearly, but do you want to just briefly tell us what's on the application?
Uh, I don't have the application in front of me, but basically uh, I've been our writer, actor, director for over thirty years. Uh, teacher at UMass, at Chengdu University of Science and Technology, at the uh, Shakespeare Ensemble, MIT.
Great.
Okay.
Over thirty books.
Wonderful. And if you don't have, um, when you have illegible handwriting, it means you're very creative. And so that is, is, that's what I always tell people about myself. So we'll go with that. Um, so that's great. Any other questions for Mr. Norris? Doug, is that your, Mr. Jones, is that your hand up?
I just prepared to make the motion to appoint uh, Lance Norris. I just prepared to make the motion to appoint Lance Norris to the Cultural Commission, but I'm just not sure whether it's a term ending 2022 or 2023. So whichever one it is, is the one we're appointing him to.
Okay, can we get clarity on that, Mr. Suso?
Patterson, second.
Yes, we'll clarify that.
Great, thank you. So whatever term is longer that we're able to appoint him to would be, would be great. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye. And your timing, Madam Chair, is amazing.
What?
The timing is amazing.
Yes, it's worked out very well. Great, thank you very much, Mr. Norris. We hope to actually see you someday, but we really appreciate you stepping up for this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Take care. Okay, so we have a wetland hearing that is supposed to start at 7:30. So why don't we just give a minute because IT is going to get ready to bring in
This one has been continued though till July.
Oh, I'm sorry, the first one has been?
Yeah, the first one, they've requested continuance until our meeting in July.
Right, and so can we have a motion for that? Do we need to do that as a vote? I believe we have to continue it.
Yeah, but we don't need to open it because we already opened it, I think, back in March.
We did. So I think we just need a further motion to continue it.
So I would move that we continue the wetland dock hearing for the Patinicus Trust until, I guess it was the July 13th?
13th and 27th are your two meetings.
Yep.
And they were looking for a full month, so I guess the, should we say the 27th, just to make sure they get the full month to get in there?
I think that's a good idea.
Issues with their neighbors, and I think the more time, the more likely it's actually going to happen. So I guess until July 27th at 7:30 PM.
Great. I have a motion and a second.
Patterson, second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Aye. Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great, thank you. Next, we have Wetland Dock Hearing, Scott Anilla Lutz for permission to modify and maintain an existing dock located at 109 Madeline Road, East Falmouth. And does anyone have the notice handy?
I do, Madam Chair. If you'd like me to read it.
If you wouldn't mind, I don't seem to have it handy. If you don't mind reading it in, that would be great.
The Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77 Wetland Regulations of the zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth on Monday, June 15, 2020, at 7:30 PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, virtually. Falmouth Town Hall on the application of Scott Anilla Lutz for permission to modify and maintain an existing dock located at 109 Madeline Road, East Falmouth, Massachusetts, in and over the water of Eel Pond. Interested parties may review the file on the hearings at the Board of Selectmen's Office per order of the Board of Selectmen, and it would be published Friday, May 22nd and Friday, May 29th, 2020, in the Falmouth Enterprise.
Great, thank you very much. Welcome to the applicants. If we could bring them on board, whomever is going to participate in the hearing. I see Scott Lutz.
It appears they're on the call. They should be able to individually turn their video on.
Okay, so if we could, if you, if folks can hear us, if you can turn on your video and your audio. Hello, Mr. Tavars, welcome. You just have to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, perfect, thank you. And we're just waiting for Mr. Lutz if he's able to come on board.
It looks like he's not muted, so we might be able to hear him.
Mr. Lutz, can you hear us? And maybe he's having some problems, trouble with that.
I'm going to just text him.
Okay.
See if he's having trouble, okay?
Thank you. Great. So while that's happening, why don't we, if you'll just mute yourself, Mr. Tavars, and that way we won't hear, we won't hear what you're doing while you're, while you're trying to reach out to him. We will just move to something else quickly while we're trying to figure out, and IT is trying to help Mr. Lutz come on board. So let's see, what can we do that will be? How about?
Handle the church?
Yes, I think that's perfect. So we have the request for the service, the Sunday Worship Service on the beach, a special event. So vote to approve requests for variance with modified plan to include social distancing procedures for Sunday worship services. For John Wesley United Methodist Church, they do these at Surf Drive Beach, Sundays, July 5th, 2020 through September 6th, 2020. And we've seen what they're going to do. Obviously, it's a beach. They have that ability to do a little bit more of that social distancing. These take place fairly early in the morning on Sundays. Did anyone have any questions about what they submitted or any concerns?
I think it's informative to the public to read the list of conditions so that people understand just what the restrictions are. So would you like me to do that?
Sure, go ahead. Thank you.
First one, everyone to maintain social distancing, six feet apart unless they live in the same household. Everyone must wear masks to the beach. Everyone to bring their own chair and not use the picnic tables. Everyone to leave immediately following the service.
Great, thank you. I think that, good point that folks, just the public to have that awareness. And just as a reminder that when the permitted special events were canceled by this board for the summer, they were done so with the condition that any event could come back and reapply with a modified plan in place to address public health concerns and have that re-reviewed by this board. And that's actually exactly what's happened here. So any questions?
No, but I would also want to point out that Reverend did reach out to the Acting Beach Superintendent Maggie Clayton and to make all the arrangements and has the support from the Acting Beach Superintendent to proceed with this.
Yes, and Nancy?
Is, is there a time for the service? Did I miss that?
I think it just didn't get into the, the way it is on the agenda, but I think they have their original time.
7:15, 8:15.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
It's always been a pretty early service to avoid interfering with other use. Yes, Mr. Suso?
Madam Chair, just to clarify, as you noted, this was proved earlier before the summer cancellation of events. It included a request for a partial fee waiver, which at that time was $281. And Reverend Mincelli has noted that there would be two additional dates if this were approved, the revised special permit. And so the amount would increase from $281 to $300 under your fee waiver package. So I just note that if that would be the pleasure of the board to include that with your motion for consideration.
Okay. Any further comment from the board? What's the pleasure of the board in terms of a motion?
I move we approve this permit as specified and with the appropriate relaxation on fees.
I'll second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. My roll call, English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great, it looks like we have Mr. Lutz?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. We can hear you. We can see you. So perfect. Okay, welcome. So we have documentation in front of us, and what I'll do is let me start by asking the board if there are any questions at all for, for the applicant about this, what's before us tonight. Mr. Jones, go ahead.
I guess I'm just trying to understand exactly what's going on as to whether, it's a dock that was there, but is there being an adjustment to the building also? Because in the order of conditions, it talked about moving the front door a certain ways. I'm just trying to make sure I understand exactly what.
I can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yep. So if you could just speak to that.
I'm going to respond to that. This was a dock that's been there since 1970, and during the, the appeal period during the 1990s, the dock was permitted. And in Falmouth, the Selectmen have to go along with it. One of the things that was remiss at the time was the Selectmen's approval, and that was the only thing missing. Since then, we've almost got it permitted through DEP. Conservation Commission has approved it. We have a building permit on, on the project. So what we're missing is an approval letter. I have a sample of one given back in 1996, not for my client, but for another client. And somehow through the paperwork at that time, that was an issue. So we're here after the fact, looking for a small piece of a puzzle to put the whole thing together.
Just as, order of conditions, there were three components to those orders. One for Title V septic, one for the, for the home replacement, if you will, and the third was the bigger component which we're here tonight.
Yes, I missed that too. So in the old days, and maybe 10 or 15 years ago, they used to keep water-dependent projects separate from non-water-dependent projects. And now all the commissions are just uniting everything. So it's a little bit of a confusing approval, but it was a house septic, just like Scott says, and the dock.
So I hope that is.
Tonight is just the dock, even though the Conservation Commission had to make determinations on the other two pieces.
Exactly right.
Any further questions? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Doug.
With the deadline on, that, we did see, receive a letter saying that if this was not done by May 10th, it was all null and void, had to start over again. Could you talk a little bit about why that is being pushed forward?
Because, because of COVID-19, the board, the DEP has relaxed that date for us. And because, and also because the owner had purchased it only a year ago, and it took six months to get it approved. So there wasn't a lot of time. You have to wait for the dominoes to go in a certain row. You can't start everything at the same time. So that's really the answer.
I guess I wanted to make sure whether it had something to do with COVID or had to do with things just not getting lined up correctly. And if it's, things not getting lined up correctly because of a new purchaser, that doesn't actually give you the leeway, but the COVID does.
Yeah, apparently so. So we, we have been dealing with DEP. They're the ones that hold the strings for the May 10th deadline, and they have relaxed it. There's some literature to that if you'd like to.
No, I think, I think it's pretty, a lot of regulatory, you know, committees, boards, and departments have extended some of those deadlines, recognizing that for a big period of time, not much was taking place. We're really only starting to open up a bit now. So that, that makes sense. I know within a lot of tolling periods were suspended or extended for a lot of indifferent commissions within the court system. They've done that as well, so.
One-year time period is always from transfer of ownership. You have a year to take care of this.
Right.
And so that's not a new thing. That's where every time you transfer property, you have a year.
Yes.
That's where the May 10th came in, was that one year.
Right, right. And because of the unusual circumstance of the Selectmen's letter or the Selectmen's approval on this, not thinking this out, we've approached Conservation, we've approached Building Department, and we sort of caught on late about the Selectmen, the missing Selectmen's approval from 1996. I think Diane Davidson told us as recently as six weeks ago, that she could not find the Selectmen's letter. We just assumed that it was there and in a file and to be produced, but there was no such luck. So that's why we're here.
And the other question I had about the drawing is the public access. I couldn't tell how easy it really was going to be for someone to be able to get underneath that deck. Can you talk about that issue a little bit?
Yeah, I'm the designer of it, and on the old deed, they made sure that if it had to be rebuilt, that you had to follow certain standards. So the standard today is six-foot clearance. However, DEP and DFW, Division of Fish and Wildlife, who look at that issue, have said that a five-foot mitigated, I guess, height is appropriate. So I drew a little character in there that would have to sort of hunch over a little bit. But he does have passage under that as a clear five-foot standard between the bottom of the joists and the beach that he would walk on.
Because I, I actually, I'm surprised the Conservation Commission was okay with that because that's not something that they've allowed. It really, they've said it had to be public access in a convenient way. And the drawing I'm seeing is he's standing in water. That means, I guess that's mean, so it's only, most of the time he's going to, except for at below mean high water, that most of the time he's going to be in water.
That's not the way I took it. There's a marsh and there's a very narrow upland beach that's above that, that they're able to draw, to walk dry.
Does it look like it's just from the marsh towards the dock is the only place?
Very narrow, yes. Only about two feet wide, right.
So is it, I guess, to me, it's looking like a way of actually cutting off access, you know, meeting the requirement, but really discouraging people from walking through there. And that's, that concerns me.
Well, that wasn't the intent, and Conservation did look at it very carefully. And they matched it with the deed, and we have followed that right to the letter. Don't forget, this is a very short dock also. So there was no leeway. You got a dock that started at ground level that has been lifted up six feet, basically, in order to accommodate all the regulations from the old deed into the new standards.
It's a three-foot dock?
It's three feet. Yeah, it was two feet. It's gone to three feet and still substandard because all docks today are four feet wide.
And then one thing I just will reiterate is just because the Conservation Commission has approved it, it still does need to meet our standard also. It isn't one where they just say it is and we say, well, since they said it was okay, we are going to say it's okay. We're supposed to, they're supposed to look at the marine resources and we're supposed to look at the effect on the public neighboring, and the neighbors.
Right. Doug Brown?
Why can't we get the six feet that is the standard?
Um, they had relaxed it simply because of the short distance. This is a 12-foot long dock. We have to mimic the shape and the size of the old dock. So when you think of elevating something 12 feet long up in the air, six feet, it gets high. So DFW has something to say about it because they wanted to make sure that the salt marsh underneath get the proper amount of sunlight. So they were satisfied. DEP, who I'm working with right now, they're satisfied, and they settled on the five-foot standard rather than going up six feet. This is, it got negotiated out that way. Nobody pushed for it. We just soon go up six feet, but it, it's harder to climb up, go across and come down, and it's very as far as the fairness to people going across public access, I'm doing another one now where rather we climb up and go over rather than go under. In this case, it, it stood clear that it should be gone under. So five feet was issued by just about everyone. There's a review period, by the way, of some 10 agencies that have looked at this with very little feedback. We've already got Planning Board to sign off on this as well, and we're waiting for the building inspector to sign off. He has it for about a month, but he's been pretty busy. So we're waiting for that to come back too. So we have just about all the sign-offs from the town regarding.
Planning Board and Building Department don't look at docks.
What's that? Zoning does.
The Planning Board in the, doesn't look at a dock, and the Building Department doesn't look at the dock.
Well, they do because DEP requires them to sign off on this. So they do look at it. They did look at it. And like I said, Planning Board has signed off. I have Planning Board sign off.
But that's on the other pieces, not on the dock piece. That's on the, as you're saying, the order of conditions.
Oh, no, it's on the dock piece. It's on the dock piece. Yes, it is.
I stand corrected.
Yep.
There's another way to look at this, and that's the fact that you've got that salt marsh there. And by actually keeping the, the clearance underneath of the salt marsh low, people are less likely to go tramping through there. So I don't see this as necessarily a bad compromise.
Me too.
Nancy, you're muted still. Nancy, you're muted still. Sorry.
That's okay.
But does it impede public access?
No, no, it's, you know, the difference we're talking about is the difference of five feet clearance versus six foot clearance. Either way, you get passage. And since it's been constructed three feet, less than the four foot standard. It's a slight ducking action. I'm five foot eight. And I would have just slightly ducked under. I saw a doctor the other day, six, six foot ten. And he had to duck under the doorway when he came in to see me. So it's you can't satisfy everyone. Some people can just easily walk under this. And other people are gonna take three feet and be up there. Access is not for tail at all.
What's the current access like?
Current access, well, without the dock, it's it's open, wide open.
But you have, isn't there a current dock there now?
Yeah, well, there was a current dock. It fell into disrepair. The owner got old and failed to rebuild it. There is no dock. There's posts that are there right now.
Oh, I thought this, I thought this was replacing a current dock. That changes the situation completely, I guess.
No, it's not replacing a current dock. It's replacing one that has historically been licensed. Through the interim process in the nineties that they allowed this. And it's legal and legitimate, except for the missing piece of paper from the approval from you selectmen back in nineteen.
Reconstruct, I think that's reconstructing a dock that's in existence, not building a new dock. And this is building a new dock.
It's reconstruction. It's greater than fifty percent renewal. You're right. That absolutely. Nobody else has said anything as far as.
They're wrong. This needs to come as a new dock.
So Peter, I was able to find the documentation from Eileen Freeny from DFW and. On that, the reason she ruled in that way had to do with the width of the of the gangway across the marsh. And the light and the protection of the marsh. So with the narrower gangway. Her recommendation was at that height. I in no way was trying to limit the limit the height over the marsh. Really just following the lead of the designer here and the and the public parties, you know. The interim approval indicates if more than fifty percent reconstruction required, it must be raised to new and current standards. So that's that was our attempt and and that, just looking at this letter from last last year when we were going through conservation. Was really, it looks like she was really focused on the light and how wide the gangway was relative to height over the marsh.
Okay. So. Any further questions? I think Mr. Jones is raising the question as to whether or not the. Petition is appropriately appropriately before us. In regards to whether or not it's a new dock or the reconstruction of an existing, existing dock. What could you tell me, Mr. Tavars, what you're saying there are posts that remain from the other dock?
Yes, yes, the surveyor located all the posts that served as the format of the template for building the new dock. And twenty years ago, that dock was there actually. And twenty years have gone by, we understood that the predecessor to Scott, when he bought the place. Had, hmm, how should you say that? Be nice, was sort of. Was going into simility. And therefore he just let the whole dock go. This has been twenty years now, twenty four years, I guess, since that time. So you can imagine without any maintenance on this dock. So how it's how it's gone and and fallen into such disrepair. So twenty four years later.
So some of the, yeah, some of the peers are are leaning or are falling in the water, the decking. Most of the decking is lying in the water. The handrail is is still there. But again, that was, you know, like a somewhat haphazard sort of attached. It looks like laid in life. So there is, there is some structure there that that I tried to tie up to last summer. But yeah, like the like the state DEP filing suggests, it's really raising, you know, replacing the the pilings themselves.
Okay, so there, so there is a substantial amount of the old dock that's still there. If you attempted to tie up to it last year and you're talking about railings and boards still being present.
Yes, but you know, honestly, they they're they're in disrepair.
No, I know, I know. I'm not saying that you should continue to utilize them. I I'm just trying to suss out what Selectman Jones was concerned about. Which was if it's coming before us to, you know, really to improve this dock versus build a new dock. But it sounds like there's still a substantial portion of the original dock that's remaining if you're able to try to tie up to it.
Yeah, the the four by fourteen deck is some of that's still floating in the water. I've I wanted to clean up, but I'm also aware of the protection of the marsh kind of piece, et cetera. But I've left, I've left those pieces there really just, you know, they're they're there. And I wanted to be fully transparent and and have all the permissions. This permission, we were operating under the interim approval, like we said earlier with the covid thing. It stopped some of the peer construction, delivery, et cetera, impacting that. And then this process came about as we were also in a parallel path pursuing this.
I guess the interim approval is from nineteen ninety four though, right?
Well, the, you know, the dock precedes the nineteen seventy eight time period, right? We have family communication, et cetera, that it existed prior to nineteen seventy two. As Wayne mentioned earlier, so it it was very old. And, you know, it's, I I see pictures in twenty ten from Google Earth where it was still in good repair. With boat floating, so I'm not exactly sure in these last few years. Where it became sort of dislodged, if you will, and things falling or leaning in the water. It's, that's not clear to me exactly when that transpired.
Okay. Any further?
Dogs in this area?
I'm sorry?
Are there any other docks in this area? Show us what other, what the neighbors look like also.
Yeah, the neighbors docks are quite substantial across the water from this. One of the butters. Seems to be a community of about six or eight, much larger structures than this. The the adjacent neighbor on the on the north side.
North side, yes.
Has a very, has a very large structure, you know, where, you know, thirty foot fishing vessel plus a floater. That's probably ten by ten are attached. And then on my south side, people comment, that's the largest dock in Falmouth. But basically, he's on the peninsula there with with a dock wraparound that's probably covers forty. I I'm sorry, probably sixty, eighty feet of waterfront. But it's more of an embun- embunment against the bank and piers and where he's had often two to three boats tied up at one time. All along the waterfront. So the the structures adjacent to me are very, are much more substantial than what we're proposing here.
Any further discussion from the board? Okay, I'm gonna just look and see. It doesn't seem as if there are any attendees who have any questions, but I'll just, if you are in attendance. For this hearing and you wish to make a comment, please do so in the chat function now. Mr. Johnson Staub, do you have anything that, I don't see anything in the chat function, but do you have anything from anyone?
No, I do not see any comments on the hearing.
Okay, thank you. And I noticed that you posted the announcement for attendees to make comment quite a while ago. Seeing no public comment. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
We received an email and I should look it up myself. But did we have any comments via email or letter in the file for this? There was an email last week or maybe ten days ago regarding a dock and the short height. I wonder if it was actually this one, if that should be a part of this record.
I don't recall receiving that, anything like that. Does anyone else on the board? Mr. Suso.
The board did receive an email on the matter of the previous hearing.
Correct.
I don't think you received.
Correct.
I am aware of that one, but I thought there was one regarding height, but I don't have the address. It was so long ago, I thought it would have come up sooner. I'm gonna take it quickly.
Okay. Any further discussion from the board? Okay, I don't have any public comment.
I move with close the hearing.
Okay, I have a motion to close the hearing. Do you have a second?
Can I just, before we do that?
Yes.
Can I just ask the applicant one question of the question? Just to put on the record that they did mail out communication to all the butters. So that the butters all had a chance to know this was happening and we did not hear from any of them with any concerns. I just want to confirm that that was true.
That is true. Yes. They were notified twice, actually, once for Conservation Commission and again for your board as well.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion to close the hearing. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Taylor. Okay, um.
Different address, so.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, hold on, let me just take a vote, Mr. Tavars, just to close the hearing and then the board will deliberate further, so.
Because the hearing can't ask his question.
Okay, all right, go ahead, Mr. Tavars, go ahead.
Well, it was an administrative question. What type of approval, hopefully, that we get through this? Is that a signature, a letter, a format?
Yep, Mr. Suso, do you want to just point out what what if they're, if they get approval, what that looks like?
Well, that's a great question. I I don't, I don't have a definitive answer. I'll have to talk with town council and confirm that. But we'll give you whatever town council indicate.
These are regularly done, Mr. Tavars, so the administrative component of it is pretty well ironed out. And there are, you know, that'll, that would go into place depending on the vote.
Sure.
My recollection is that we actually sign off on the drawing.
Yes.
I don't know how we do that.
I believe that there is, we can, we can clarify that with town council. But I do believe there are probably some provisions for us to, you know, for lack of a better word, electronically sign. Or note that our signatures are approved by our vote. So we can clarify the logistics of it with town council, but.
There are also signature stamps that are.
Correct, so we can, we can authorize use of that. Okay?
Great, great, thank you very much. Oh, the vote, the vote, when you do the vote, is it a majority vote? Is it a?
This is super.
Super majority.
I'm sorry.
It should, it's four out of five.
Four out of five, okay.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor of closing the hearing by roll call, English Braga, I, Brown. Taylor.
Taylor, I.
Patterson.
Patterson, I.
Jones.
Jones, I.
Okay, any further discussion? Hey, do I have a motion on this application?
I move that we approve the application as conditioned by the Conservation Commission.
We should probably put some findings in first, though.
A good point.
Okay, so, Mr., or actually, Mr. Johnson Staub, if you could just write, keep track of these findings for us. Thank you. Okay, so I think one important finding would be that this is the, you know, really a reconstruction of an existing dock.
I cannot agree to that finding.
Okay. It sounds to me that there is a substantial portion of this dock that's still remaining, although it sounds like it's in the water. But I do take Mr. Lutz, he sounds credible to me when he tells me. Oh, go ahead, Doug.
Mr. Tavars says it wasn't used for twenty years. And that's not an existing dock. If the last time it was used was twenty years ago, really, as a dock.
Mr. Lutz noted that he said he saw Google pictures from twenty ten where there were some boats. Isn't that what you just said to us?
Yes, the 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 pier is fourteen feet. There's a fourteen foot John boat on the property. And there there's a very clear twenty ten Google Earth photo of that dock. And in good, well, from Google Earth, you can tell there's a boat, you can tell the boat is tied up to the four by fourteen. Here, both are in, both are in place at the location. Family members indicated that he really went into really, really poor health in the last four to five years. So I feel like it's the mid teens somewhere where this dock really just became unusable. I think storms would have washed those posts and the platform away. The the gangway itself was was loose and and floating. I pulled that on the bank, but the other, the four by fourteen deck is still in the water. Again, I left that really just in case there were ever questions like this, right? Was there really a dock there? Yes, I can, I can take photos of what's in the water or have anyone stop by. Probably the six posts or so are still there with some two by fours sort of screwed to them. That, you know, looked to be four or five years old. So.
Okay.
I think what I meant by twenty years is it was not maintained for twenty years and fallen into disrepair.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, are you comfortable with that finding that there is, that there is some?
Dock that was there.
Pardon?
Replacing a dock that was there.
Was there. Okay, so we're placing a dock that was there. And that it does sound as if the, that lower height does allow for public access. And it sounds as if that there was consideration about the marsh and the impact of that height. On the, on the wetlands. It sounds from the DEP regs. That's what I'm hearing anyway. When I look through the paperwork from conservation, I don't know if anyone else has any other findings.
Does feel like the this dock is going to be an improvement on the treatment of the marsh than what is currently there or what has been there in the past.
Okay, so that would be a finding. Any other findings?
I guess what I would word is that there's been an attempt to maintain public access.
Okay.
We've heard no objection from a butters.
Yep, okay. Any other findings that we should include? Okay. Are we satisfied with those findings? Okay, Mr. Jones moves approval with those findings.
Patterson, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, English Braga, I, Brown.
Brown, I.
Taylor.
Taylor, I.
Patterson.
Patterson, I.
Jones.
Jones, I.
Okay, so, Mr. Lutz, Mr. Tavars, you will receive some communication from the town manager's office. From probably Diane Davidson, who with whom you've already been in contact regarding the paperwork, okay? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
You too. Okay, next we have, under summary of actions, vote to approve application for change of manager. Of an all alcoholic club license, Falmouth Yacht Club, two ninety Clinton Avenue, Falmouth. So if we can bring on in Mr. Keough. If he's present. I see him listed. Welcome.
Hello, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Excellent.
Great, so we have the application in front of us. And what I'll do is, looks like everything in terms of the checks that are done. By the police department, we're all set. Looks like everything has been turned in for the application. So I will ask, is there, are there any questions from the board?
Have you been a manager of alcoholic license before?
No.
Are you aware that you are responsible for everything that goes on there with any interaction with alcohol?
Yes, absolutely. I've been an on the water director and very familiar with the yacht club scene. At two major yacht clubs in Annapolis and in Chicago, so I'm very familiar with that.
Any other questions?
Would suggest a comment to follow up on. We have experience managing alcoholic facilities, at least not in Massachusetts. But regardless of whether you screw up or your employees screw up, you're still responsible for.
Yes. I fully understand that.
Great, and I see you got your certification, all of those things. So any other questions for Mr. Keough? How do you, is it Keough or?
That's it, Keough.
Okay, I've been really mangling some names tonight, so.
It's okay.
Um, okay, any questions? Do I have a motion?
I move that we appoint Mr. Keough, Jay Keough, to be the. I move that we appoint Mr. Ke, uh, Jay Keough to be the, uh, alcoholic manager at the Falmouth Yacht Club.
Okay, do you have a second?
Patterson, second.
Great, okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, English Braga, I, Brown?
Brown, I.
Taylor? Taylor, I.
Patterson?
Patterson, I.
Jones?
Jones, I.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome for your first season. Take care.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next, if we could bring in Catherine Hickey, please. Um, this is an application, common victor, um, approve application for new common victory license, the stand at 75 County Road, North Falmouth.
He's coming in under the name Sarah Hannan.
Okay. A woman of mystery and aliases. And hello, welcome.
How are you?
Good, and we can let Mr. Keough go if IT can, and can let him go so he can do whatever he has to do. Great, thank you. Alright, welcome, Ms. Hickey. Um, we have this application. If you could just tell us a little bit about what this, um, new, uh, place would look like.
So it is in, uh, North Falmouth at the four corners where the old holy cow used to be. Um, I own a place up the street called the Daily Brew, um, and so I've been doing that for 14 years. And during the COVID, uh, some people, I mean, some people, um, couldn't keep their lease at that spot. And so the landlords asked if I'd come down and put in a, um, sorry, I got a cat, um, put in a coffee shop in there. So we're just gonna do coffee and juice, there's no kitchen. Um, it's gonna be coffee, juice bar, smoothies, um, and all prepared foods.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, and so, um, with all, obviously, um, when did the Daily Brew, did you close for a while and then open up again?
We did, we closed in March. We've been open for five, uh, weekends now.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're looking to fortify that income and try to offer something else to the community where it's gonna be only takeout. There's no tables in there, no seats, no anything. It's just come in, get your stuff and go out. And with all the people coming down the bike path, we're right at the end of it, so it could be a, an, you know, an added bonus for North Falmouth for people to have something else to, to come to, really.
Yep, and I'll just ask, we, uh, you feel pretty confident that you're able to comply with sort of all of the, you're familiar, obviously, because you have the Daily Brew, but from, with all the regulations that are currently in place, um, regarding phase two?
Yeah, exactly, and hence the reason where we're not gonna even have seats. Um, but we do have a counter in there that people can walk in. We can socially distance with people being six feet apart while they're in there. Three people could be in at one time. Um, and they can enter in one way, exit out the other, so it's kind of a perfect scenario for this, this summer in particular.
Okay, and when would you anticipate opening if it, if it's approved?
If it's approved, we'd be ready to go in like maybe two weeks, I think tops, we'd be ready to go.
Great. Any other questions from the board?
How many employees do you expect to have in there?
About six. In, in, so I have three daughters also who, uh, work for me at both places, so in addition to my three, there'd be six other employees.
But not in the building at, at one time?
No, no. Oh, how many people would be on a shift?
Yep.
So two people at a time.
Great. Okay, any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion?
I have new approval.
Okay, second?
Patterson, second.
Okay, any further, I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, English Braga, I, Brown?
Brown, I.
Taylor?
Taylor, I.
Patterson?
Patterson, I.
Jones?
Jones, I.
Great, congratulations, that's my neck of, I'm in Hatchville, that's kind of my neck of the woods a little bit, so that's great, what a great addition.
I know.
Take care, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have, um, vote to approve an application to the Division of Ecological Restoration, DER, for priority status for upper, upper Coonamessett River Project. Um, are we bringing in Betsy for this or Mr. Suso, are you giving us a walkthrough?
Madam Chair, I'm not sure whether, um, Betsy is, um.
That, Betsy Gladfelder with us?
She's in the audience.
Okay, great, if we could promote her, please, so she could talk to us a little bit about this opportunity.
Here she is now.
Okay, great, thank you. There you go.
Here I am.
Hi, Betsy, how are you?
I'm fine, I'd be, I'd happy to have Julian give the run-through.
When you wait, when you wait all night, you get to go on, so, um, you gave us a great letter that was forwarded to us. Um, so the board has a sense of what this is. If you just wanna kind of do a brief explanation so that folks watching come, can understand what this is about.
Yeah, so just very briefly, um, most of you probably know that the, uh, Coonamessett River Restoration Project, which was the Lower Coonamessett River, uh, is, the construction is complete, the restoration isn't complete, it'll go on the rest of our lives, but, but the construction is complete. And, um, what was critical for that, uh, project was we were designated a priority river by Division of Ecological Restoration, which, uh, gives us three, um, key things. One is we qualify for technical support and we have program ma- manager, or we had a program manager, would like to get one again. Uh, the second is that they, uh, they will contract with, um, experts for various things that need to be done. For instance, if, if there's a historical component, then they'll contract with public archaeological labs to have that work done. And the third thing is, uh, as Julian knows, because I come all the time to get signatures, um, they've given us money directly. So, uh, if, so the reason, so the project, so we want, we're asking for priority status for the Upper Coonamessett River, which is the next two miles further north. But the particular project that we've proposed is, uh, actually two miles up the river. For those of you who have hiked that area, uh, it's where Broad River is. And the Coonamessett River Restoration Project has basically made the river be a free-flowing river. It was a quarter of a mile free-flowing, now it's a 2.2 mile free-flowing. And the area where Broad River is, uh, have any of you ever heard of, of, um, Dutchman's Ditch? No, well, you're gonna have to read about it, Megan. So Dutchman's, the upper part of the river, the upper part of all these systems is, uh, is not a defined river cha, was not a defined river channel. It was a wetland with sort of, uh, intertwining, um, channels. And in, in most years, in wet years, the fish could get through that up to Coonamessett Pond. But in a dry year, it was, they couldn't get there. They might be able to go into, into Broad River, they probably did go to Broad River, but beyond that, they couldn't. And so in the, probably, the, the Wampanoags probably did this, but certainly several times in the 1800s, di, uh, ditches were dug down to the groundwater level, connecting the wettest spots of that wetland. And so, um, this is the area, this is, this is town conservation land, that's, um, the Baptiste Boggs. And so we would work with Division of Ecological Restoration to, and, and basically there are a whole bunch of culverts there that right now, the Division of Marine Environmental Services has to spend a lot of time and they have to get the engineering department to help put in. So a lot of those culverts should be, we should be able to eliminate them and basically restore the connectivity of the wetland, just like we did in the southern part of the river. So, so that's, we've, DER asked us to apply. And, um, I work with Peter Johnson Staub and people from conservation and people from, uh, uh, MES and, um, that's what this is. And so what I, what I'm asking is your approval of this, and then I'm really hoping that Julian can get me a letter tomorrow so I can submit it. It's a, it's an electronic submission.
Okay.
But every, I finished everything else.
Perfect.
That's never happened before, has it, Betsy?
Um, any questions from the board? I guess the only question I would ask is, and this is just a process, um, is this something, we don't really have, uh, this is obviously timely and time-sensitive, um, any issue where this would have some, been something that would normally go to finance committee?
Uh, it, it, this is, there's no obligation from the town for any money for this.
Great, that's, that's what I wanted to make sure we had on the record, okay? Thank you. Um, any questions from the board? Okay, great, do I have a motion?
We, uh, show our support to this application for the DER for priority status for the Coonamessett, Upper Coonamessett River Project.
Okay.
Second, and thank you, Betsy.
Yes, alright, I have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, vote by roll call, English Braga, I, Doug Brown?
Brown, I.
Taylor?
Taylor, I.
Patterson?
Patterson, I.
Jones?
Jones, I.
Great, thank you, Betsy, and we just love, keep the pictures coming. We love seeing the progress of all the work there, so thank you.
I'd like to take you for a walk sometime.
I would love nothing more than to get out of this office.
Yeah.
And I'm sure it's true for everybody, so we'll take you up on it.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Okay, next we have vote to accept federal grants from the Department of Justice for FY 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant in the amount of $36,698. Do we have, um, Chief Dunn with us or Mr. Suso, do you wanna, um, walk us through this?
I'm happy to comment, I think Chief Dunn is with us as well. Um, the board has a copy of a letter from, um, Chief Dunn describing the, uh, funding opportunity and indicating how it would be allocated, essentially, uh, overtime and, and related expenses uh, that are incidentally COVID-19, and I see the chief's with us, so I will defer to him at this point.
Great, welcome, chief, thank you for joining us.
Yeah, good, good evening.
And thank you for the letter that really lays out, um, what this would be spent on. Do you wanna just, um, kind of highlight it for the public who hasn't had the, uh, opportunity to read this letter?
Sure, uh, this is a, uh, federal grant that came out at the, uh, start of the COVID. And it's money that we can spend, uh, going back to, uh, January, actually. And it's to be used for, uh, supplies, overtime and related, uh, expenses for COVID. And right now, we, we, we've spent, um, since, since all this has happened, you know, to have services come in as far as cleaning ourselves and cleaning our cruises, we use this, we use an outside service when we have a, uh, an individual who has COVID, uh, supplies and, uh, and overtime, because when, when the academies shut down, which was COVID-related, we, uh, continue training our cadets and the instructors got paid overtime for that.
Okay, and do you just wanna let, um, so it looks like just the numbers again, 23,000 for personnel and then 13,698 dollars for supplies, is how you see the breakdown?
Exactly, yes.
Okay, great. Any, yes, Mr. Jones?
Uh, chief, have we had any officers who have been directly suffering from COVID either themselves or their family members?
I know we were very fortunate not to have any officers at all. Um, I know we had some, uh, I think some officers, some of their family members were tested, uh, but it was negative. Uh, but, um, as far as the department itself, we had no, uh, positive cases of COVID from the offices, uh, even though we did have some, my guests who were positive.
Well, that's my guy, they'll keep themselves safe, so.
Yeah, really, really something, um, and so hopefully that continues on. So this is a great opportunity to have these funds, uh, to supplement some of those needs. Any other questions about this grant from the board, Mr. Suso and then Ms. Taylor?
Oh, pardon me, Madam Chair, I just wanted to confirm on that, uh, our good fortune in not having, um, any officers who, uh, had to be quarantined, uh, due to exposure, I just want to acknowledge, uh, very appropriately, the chief Dunn, uh, showed extraordinary leadership in putting a protocol in place early on during this pandemic to, uh, safeguard the, uh, the health of our officers, uh, and it is, uh, paid dividends. Certainly, uh, there's an element of luck, we all know in that. Uh, however, um, when one plans ahead as well as has been done in this case, uh, um, you earn that kind of luck, so we're hoping that that good fortune continues and, and the protocols are, uh, well thought out and, uh, have paid dividends. Just want to note that for the record, thank you.
Yep, thank you, and that officers have taken it seriously and really engaged in that, so. Um, Ms. Taylor?
Actually, Mr. Suso said what I was gonna say, just in, um, keeping our officers safe and being very fortunate that none of our officers have, um, become sick. So thank you for that.
And just, just to note that obviously as summer, you know, really unravels, we have so many more individuals who are here in our town and obviously more opportunities for potential exposure as our population, um, grows. You know, we don't know how much it will grow, but we know that it will, so, um, just, you know, whatever, um, as those needs arise, obviously, I know the chief is speaking with town manager and trying to make sure that we are protecting our frontline, um, personnel, so this is just another way to help, um, continue to do that. So we really appreciate you taking advantage of it and bringing it before us, chief. Um, any other questions about this particular grant? Okay, do I have a motion to, um, uh, vote to accept these funds?
I move that we, uh, accept these funds.
Okay.
Patterson, second.
Okay, and any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call, English Braga, I, Brown?
Brown, I.
Taylor? Taylor, I.
Patterson?
Patterson, I.
And Jones?
Jones, I.
Great, thank you, chief, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anything else, anything else that we should know about while you're here?
Not at the moment.
That's a good thing. Right, thank you, we appreciate it. Take care. Next, we have vote to authorize a new Silver Beach Improvement Association to file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission for an order of conditions to rake, screen the Town Beach Parcel, 04A41000098 on Moses Road in the New Silver Beach Neighborhood. Um, so this is really correcting, um, a, a bit of a, I won't say an oversight, but just the, the process needs a little bit of tweaking. I know we've, we've kind of talked about this issue before. So, Mr. Suso, do you just wanna, um, sort of set out what it is and then we can take the vote?
Certainly, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, previous action on this by the board, um, uh, was not quite on point and the town council reviewing it, uh, has suggested in a, uh, an email in your packet that, uh, the board consider revoting this. Uh, to vote to authorize a new Silver Beach Improvement Association to file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission for an order of conditions to rake or screen the Town Beach Parcel, and there's a parcel number 04A41000098 on Moses Road in the New Silver Beach Neighborhood, and town councils asked that you consider that language for your motion, if that would be your pleasure.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Fairly straightforward, I know we saw this project, it's really just correcting, um, again, you know, with input from town council that this is the way the process needs to proceed? Any questions on that? Doug Brown, you're, you're muted. Oh, sorry, Doug Brown had a comment first, go ahead, Doug.
I just, uh, didn't they already, uh, consult with the Conservation Commission? Is that order conditions not already issued?
My understanding was that that was not complete because, uh, this is still, uh, missing from the, uh, uh, package of necessary for approval. Uh, we can double-check that, though, but that's, that's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, Mr. Jones, did you have a motion?
I have moved that we authorize the New Silver Beach Improvement Association to file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission for the Order of Conditions to Rake or Screen the Town Beach Parcel, 04A41000098 on Moses Road in the New Silver Beach Neighborhood.
Okay.
Patterson, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none by roll call, English Braga, I, Brown?
Brown, I.
Taylor?
Taylor, I.
Patterson?
Patterson, I.
Jones?
Jones, I.
Great, thank you. Alright, next we have a vote to accept donation from the T-Ticket Village Association, the amount of $500 to the Veterans Service Donation Account. Um, really thankful, this is a wonderful, obviously, the, uh, you know, wonderful cause and a huge thank you from T-Tiffic, T-Ticket Civic Association. Um, do I have a motion?
I have moved, we accept the donation of $500 worth of gratitude.
Thank you.
Patterson, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, English Braga, I, Brown?
Brown, I.
Taylor?
Taylor, I.
Patterson?
Patterson, I.
And Jones?
Jones, I.
Oh, great, thank you. Um, next we are going under special events. We have vote to approve the application for special events, food for vets, food pickup for veterans, reserved lot at Cape Cod Fairgrounds, Thursday, June 25th, 2020. Um, really a wonderful, uh, service that's been taking place and we had a lot of information. we had a lot of information in our packet about all of the records that they've been meeting in terms of services provided to veterans.
I have moved approval unless someone wants to uh, give a more plug for it.
Patterson, second. And we just note that they obviously have all the protections pretty much spelled out here. That it's gonna be handled much like uh, wheels, wheels on, meals on wheels.
Great. Um, okay. So, I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. English Braga, aye. Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great. Thank you. Okay, next, we have, welcome Scott. I see Scott McGann, our health agent. Um, we have our um, sort of regular slotted issue about um, discussion of update on COVID-19 issues. So, we'll start with you, Scott, with any news that you wanna share with us. And then we'll um, talk about some other specific uh, issues around some town uh, events at the rec and for restaurants. So, welcome, Scott.
Would you like some good news to start us off?
Yes.
All right. If you look at the confirmed tests today, the number for the state was fifty-eight.
Wow.
Averaging mainly between two-hundred and four-hundred over the past week or so. I don't know if you guys get a chance to go on that every day. If you don't, and anybody's in the audience, at four o'clock on the state's DPH website, you can get COVID uh, updates. So, that's the lowest number in quite some time. So, uh, FALUS numbers are right around one-ninety-five. Last, we had gone about two weeks roughly without, without much activity. And we've had a little bit end of the week, but not, nothing that didn't make sense. It was a couple of long-term cares and a couple, it was a couple for the first time in a couple of weeks. They were not long-term care-related, but they were related, so to speak. Um, so it gives that number right around one-ninety-five. Um, so, you know, we're still right around twelve, thirteen percent of the county's uh, the county's numbers. And so, um, you know, I think we're still sort of, we're in a good spot and we have been in a good spot for a few weeks now. Um, one of the good things in the state numbers, um, there's a key metric and one of its, uh, the positive rate, the rate at which the tests are positive, that number gets under three percent. That's, that, that's kind of considered under control. And our number finally got below three percent uh, of, of percent positive rate. So, all the numbers have been doing well, but the number I was hoping to get down below three percent finally happened late last week. So, that's another good metric. So, we're doing well. Um, you know, what happens as we increase the population over the summer, I don't know. But, you know, and I'm sure we'll have hiccups throughout the summer and we'll just do our best to sort of stay on top of them and be aggressive with the contact tracing and, and that's the key, you know. And uh, you know, so that's kind of where we've been at. Um, you know, this past couple of weeks, it's been, you know, restaurants with new seating and some of those permits and answering questions. Lots and lots and lots of questions. Wish I had a nickel for every question of what, how can I come to my, you know, weekly rental if I have to quarantine for two weeks, you know?
Yeah. You, you wouldn't have, we would lose you because you wouldn't need to have this job anymore. You'd be able to retire, so.
So, the, you know, the questions come in, we do our best to help everybody we can, you know, answer the questions. And we follow up on complaints and we, you know, we're doing the complaints and we're, we're doing it in a manner where we do it verbally first and written second. And then there's a fine structure after that. It's not what I wanna do. It's not how I roll. Everybody knows. Just was trying to, you know, everybody plays by the rules equally and we all just get along. So, it's kind of though. Um, so it's, those are the challenges, just sort of dealing with the volume of it. But um, you know, hopefully the cases, I said, we didn't have any Sunday or any Monday cases. So, it didn't seem like the few I got last week necessarily precipitates out to others. So, that's, that's, so.
Could you tell Scott a little bit about um, congregant living, you know, nursing home and assisted living? Cause I know that that was, that's something we always get questions about and we've, we've struggled with a couple of facilities. Do you, I, I know it comes under the state, but just as far as the numbers that you're aware of or what's happening there?
Well, the numbers, I mean, I think I just calculated out sixty-three percent of deaths. It's been hovering between sixty-one and sixty-three in the cases. So, it's sort of, you know, as the state gets lower in numbers, the nursing home counts are lower. But they're roughly around that same percentage. So, roughly the same amount of percentage of, of that. Um, in terms of how they're doing, oh, they're gonna get better. I mean, I think it was such a, you know, quick and happen quick and as they learn more and the tests get better and you start getting these false, you know, negative, you know, what happens? You get these asymptomatic negative tests. You go to work, but actually you end up testing positive a week later and it makes things rude. Um, the nursing homes that we had issues with have definitely taken, you know, it's definitely gone down. But, you know, well, you will get one pop up and it's like, how did that pop up? You know, you'll get somebody who's a, who's an employee being tested on a weekly or by, you know, every other week basis. Um, I think one of the keys is gonna be, would be nice to test them once or twice a week, or three times a week. But it's really, you know, we're not at that point yet. The tests take a couple of days to return. You know, the better the tests get, the better we can get people out of the, out of the, out of the nursing home and long-term care that might have symptom, I mean, be asymptomatic or positive. Uh, so that's sort of been the struggle. I mean, we get, they're getting better as they learn, like everybody else. And hopefully, we don't get blow-ups of twenty, thirty, fifty and some of these ones that you've seen, you know, not, not in FALUS, you know, seventy cases or whatever. It's just, uh, hopefully we can not do that if we do get another, you know, uptick that that doesn't happen. That's the hope. And then Fallon, there's a lot of places they're doing, uh, using the um, the National Guard, now Fallon, the, the company that does the uh, ambulances, that they do, they do a service as well. So, you have more people out there testing, the more testing we do, the better. That's kind of where we're at. I hope that answers some of your questions.
Yeah, definitely. I see, I see that Sam has a question.
Yeah, you know, our tourists come from other states besides Massachusetts. Uh, how are they doing in terms of getting that number of infections in those environments down?
That would depend where you came, where you're coming from. So, so, I mean, like Arizona, Texas and Florida have an uptick. Some, uh, other town in New York's doing fairly well. Um, you know, and we travel, let's say, let's say, Sam, if you're gonna go to Maine, they're not gonna want somebody from Massachusetts up in Maine because I'm north of Bangor. I don't think they've had too many cases. So, if you've got a summer home, if you're on Cadillac Mountain up in Maine, you might have the same, oh, guy with Massa-, just like we look at somebody maybe with New Jersey plates, they will look at somebody with Massachusetts plates, right? So, I mean, I think as a nation, some states are doing better than others. And it's just.
I'm, I'm aware of it. I was thinking more than the New England states. Most of our tourists seem to come from the New England area. And so, I.
They do, most of the states are doing well. I mean, we're, we hit, we hit harder than any of the other states. There's some of the exception of the uh, of the Yankee section, the New York Yankee section of Connecticut, I call it, you know. The west of Hartford um, area. But um, you know, they're, they're, they're doing fairly well. They're doing well. The, the northern states are doing well. I mean, the northeast states rather.
Great. Any other questions for Scott? Obviously, Scott, we're gonna have you stick around to, if you can, to weigh in a little bit on some of our upcoming discussions um, about the uh, some of the outdoor seating, if you can, just to give your perspective. And then uh, on the summer camp component. Um, Peter, did you come on? Cause you wanted to weigh in on this piece of it?
Recreation piece, yes.
Okay, great. Um, so if we don't have any specific questions for Scott about this, um, why don't we um, go ahead and take uh, move on to the next, which is update on planned cancellation of traditional rec uh, camp and discussion of alternative programming. So, welcome, Joe. We appreciate you joining us tonight.
Thank you. It's good to be here.
So, um, you know, something that I think a lot of parents have been, you know, assuming is gonna happen, but really holding out some hope. So, obviously, once the, the guidelines came down from the governor, um, I know that there's been a lot of discussion um, with recreation, health agent, and town management about what can happen at the Gus Canty this summer and what can't happen. So, um, Joe, if you wanna start off that discussion, or Peter, however you guys have thought about, is best to structure the discussion tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, if it is uh, okay with you, I'll, I'll kick off the conversation.
Sure.
Um, just wanted to begin by saying that uh, echoing the point you were just making, we certainly are very aware of the importance of this summer recreation program uh, that runs for a good chunk of the day. And it's an extremely affordable program. Uh, Joe and his staff do a terrific job making it really fun for the kids. So, they return year after year. And uh, it's something that we, we didn't make a quick decision on it because we knew that the demand for it is there, perhaps, you know, more than ever in the sense of people being stir crazy and um, the kids wanting to get out and see their peers and interact. Um, but by that very same token, it, it raises the challenge that we face, right? The guidelines came out and not surprisingly, the guidelines required that we keep the kids six feet apart um, as much as possible. And when they're not six feet apart, to be wearing masks. And when we think about, you know, when, in talking to Joe uh, about the way the kids interact and what they just naturally impulsively do, they wanna be near each other. They wanna touch each other. And um, you know, we know the school is gonna be facing very similar challenges. Um, and, you know, we're gonna have to, to some extent, we as a, as a society and a community are going to have to begin confronting these issues at some point. But we felt that on balance, when we put all the measures in place to protect the kids as best we could, even with those measures, it's not gonna be perfect. So, there's going to be some risks, some kids mixing that, you know, hadn't been mixed in a, in a long time. And the experience wasn't going to be as positive for them as what they're accustomed to and what Joe and his staff are accustomed to. So, on balance, you know, creating some risk, some level of, of COVID risk and not having a great experience, it just didn't seem to add up for us um, that this was going to be a good thing for the community.
And Peter, um, also just some of the other uh, requirements, which would have meant no off-site field trips whatsoever, which is um, a huge component of the program. Really, one of the, you know, greatest values of the program is all the wonderful things that Joe and his staff uh, organized for the participants to be able to go and do throughout the summer for each session. Um, I know it's, you know, it's a lot of the ways that the parents choose some of the sessions are based on some of those trips and which trips their kids really love. Um, so that's not possible. Um, and also the small groupings of ten students with two staff members and that, that cohort really being stuck to go from place to place in whatever they were doing on-site. Um, so just to remind folks that those are two other um, pieces that came down from the requirements from the state that are shaping this discussion. So, Joe, did you want to um, talk a little bit about, from your perspective, having done this for a long time, um, just uh, anything you wanna share?
Um, well, what I, my main concern was, as Peter had said, it's a great experience for the kids. And we can play a lot of active sports games, a lot of running around. And they were discouraging any of that. Um, no games of soccer, no games of basketball. Um, puzzles and card games and, and solitaire. And, you know, we just didn't feel like that's worth what we usually do as a camp. And again, besides no field trips, there are no in-house shows, no magic show, no mad science. Um, have to stay on the grounds, no playground. Um, trying to keep, you know, fourth graders from hugging each other and rolling around on the ground was gonna be very difficult, keeping their masks on. Uh, one of the requirements is if they're not six feet apart, they have to wear a mask. We have several children in camp that would not, or would have refused to wear a mask. Other kids in the camp would have said, well, why does he not have to wear a mask? And I do.
Right.
It created its own issue uh, by itself. Um, sat down with the staff several times, asked their opinion on it, what, how they felt about it. And they were nervous for the kids. They were nervous for themselves. Um, and again, it comes down for me, what kind of experience could we actually give them compared to what they're used to? And if you're like, we can give them much of a fun time, cause they would have gone home and said, um, all we did today was watch a movie. All we did was do a puzzle. That's not what we're about. We like to be fun and act.
Yep. And also the logistics of taking temperatures at drop-off. I mean, part of what parents, you know, I mean, we did it from the first day that Derek was eligible until the last day that you guys kicked him out of teen camp. We were there, you know, five days a week for as many sessions as possible. And the beauty of it is, it's really easy to, you know, do the drop-off and, and be able for folks to get to work. If they have to stop and wait for their children to have their temperature taken, to see whether or not it's elevated and whether or not they can stay to participate, it also undercuts, you know, what a lot of folks use it for, which is um, you know, really efficient, wonderful childcare. Yeah, so.
They have to answer fourteen questions every day, sign a waiver every day. Um, I would have taken, for fifty kids was the max we could have done and still left a couple of places for them to move to, to play. It would have taken us over an hour, hour and a half to get them all in.
Right. Yeah.
That would have been very, very, very difficult.
Pretty high hurdle.
Yeah.
Um, so, Peter, do you, are you gonna speak to the next part, which is the potential discussion of alternative programming or?
No, I'll just queue it up for Joe, if that's okay. So, um, I, I wanted to also mention that uh, the decision was made, you know, Joe in consultation with, with his staff, with me, with the town manager, um, with Scott McGann. So, it, you know, was definitely uh, taken seriously and a lot of folks involved. So, in light of the fact that we're not, you, you, we don't feel we're able to do the full-day summer camp program that we've done in the past, we did wanna take a look at, are there some shorter programs that we could provide? That's not a full-day substitute, but um, provide some level of opportunity. And Joe and his staff have come up with the uh, a half a dozen programs um, that are new that, you know, that we haven't new, just in the sense of we haven't offered them as uh, individual programs in the summer in the past. In addition, and those are in addition to uh, sailing and, and junior golf, which we have offered in the past. And uh, and Joe is in sort of the final stages of vetting to, uh, it looks like we will be able to run those two programs. But Joe, if you wanna describe the other programs that you're looking at, that would be great.
Um, we're gonna look at, um, as, you know, most of you know, our normal programs run for a span of eight weeks um, for thirty dollars. So, what we're gonna do for the thirty dollars for the summertime is run a Monday through Thursday for two hours of some other programs that'll still equal basically the eight week uh, just in a span of two weeks. So, we're gonna do soccer. We'll do soccer, say, uh, Monday through Thursday um, in the morning from nine to eleven. Uh, we can take ten kids. One of my staff will run the program. It'll be far easier to keep them socially distant. Um, we can each give them their own soccer ball. Uh, so there'll be no exchanging of um, balls. Uh, we can sanitize the balls afterwards for the next day. And then we'll do, say, soccer in the morning, basketball in the afternoon. So, there'll be no mixing of kids coming and going in the building, um, which was one of the issues that um, had come up in the guidance. Um, so we're looking at soccer and basketball. And we're gonna try to do a pickleball program with kids. Um, volleyball, um, arts and crafts, which we did talk to the staff and we think we can do that outside. So, we're gonna um, try to do an arts and crafts program outside. Um, and just some assorted other programs, just to make sure we have something. Um, and, you know, we'll run them for two weeks, Monday through Thursday, or Friday being a rain date. Um, and I think we'll be able to get some people to sign up. Unfortunately, it'll be a lot smaller than what we're accustomed to doing. Um, but at least we'll have something out there and um, we can give the people an option for some sort of an activity.
Any questions from the board? When do you anticipate, Joe, um, being able to kind of list those options and those timelines? When do you think that might be?
Um, I would hope to be able to get them on the website by um, mid to late next week. Um, set up the registration and hopefully get them started on um, July sixth.
Okay. Which would be when the camp?
We would have started camp.
Right. Okay. Um, any questions from the board?
I have one question. Will there be any uh, public uh, opportunity to use any of the fields this year? How will that be managed?
Uh, right now, the public is available to use the fields. Um, they sign up. What I'm asking for is a field reservation form. It's an adult group or a youth um, sports group. They need to give me insurance and a plan for the COVID um, guidance, um, how they're gonna run that. Um, at the moment, if they're on the field, there's no games can be played. They have to practice in groups of ten or less. And then hopefully, when they get to phase three, they can stop playing games. And uh, we can start getting back towards our, our normal, um, hopefully as close to normal way of life as we can possibly get. And uh, but yeah, senior softball guys are looking to start. Little League is looking to start. Babe Ruth has already started. Um, we're getting calls from a couple of other groups looking to get on the fields and get busy. Everybody's tired of sitting around and they're ready to go.
Do some, get some movement.
Yes.
Any other questions for Joe? Great. Thank you. We really appreciate trying to be creative and offer some relief for, for parents. And even if it's just for a small window to be able to run some errands or, or do something that, and for the kids, obviously, to just be able to be outside and, and get some exercise. So.
You know, camp is what I love to do. And, you know, it's, it's very difficult this year not doing it. Be able to wear my hats and run around with the kids and have a good time. So, uh, we'll be back next year stronger and better and ready to go.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. And once everything gets up and running, we'll definitely make that um, announcement from this board. Um, but for folks, they should go ahead and keep um, an eye on the recreation website um, for the postings of those um, potential programs coming up in the next couple of weeks.
They can certainly give us a call and we'll give them more information.
Great. Thank you. Doug Jones? Great. Thank you. Doug Jones?
Is there any report on the condition of the fields? Has, have we been able to benefit from this spring to actually get the fields in great shape?
We have. They look, they're looking very good. Uh, very green. They've been mowing them two times a week. Um, so we're pretty happy with the way things are looking right now. Jeremiah has done a great job. And uh, it's been a little trying for him. His staff's a little short right now, but he's been out there every day himself, working hard. And uh, they look good.
Right. Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Peter. Appreciate that. Take care. You too.
Thanks, Joe.
All right. Next, we're going to get a status update on expedited temporary permit license process for outdoor restaurant seating. Uh, Mr. Suso, do you want to um start off this conversation?
Very ha- happy to, Madam Chair. As uh, as the board's aware, I'd given you a um a brief status report uh as of Friday and uh as of end of uh workday today. Uh, we've had the five uh formal permits slash licenses issued. Uh, one additional is only in need of a certificate of insurance. And the uh vendor's been notified, so that should be forthcoming. And then a permit issued for that sixth one. In addition, there are 13 applications that are in the midst of uh staff and legal review uh as we uh speak, and that's uh underway uh today and uh hopefully brought to some closure in the next day or so. Um, and then we have the two additional ones that are missing some pieces of key information. And the applicants have been notified uh and we're asking that those uh, the missing information be dealt with so that we can respond with an internal review. Madam Chair, I do want to acknowledge and uh thank Phyllis Downey and Diane Davidson from our office uh for their extraordinary work in uh coordinating and reviewing this. As the board's aware, we've handled these applications as we have for special permit applications. Uh, meaning that the key staff members needing to be involved, it circulated to all of them. And with Diane and Phyllis's assistance, uh, we made sure that we have complete applications so that we're not uh sending it around to staff members only to find out that they can't comment. We have to go back to the applicant again before we can circulate properly. So we advised all applicants that uh we really need to have those applications completed and Phyllis and Diane have been back and forth with applicants so that uh, everything is together when they're circulated. And we can get a definitive and expedited uh answer going forward. And so uh, I think I also noted that we'd received a, a little over two dozen uh different applications and inquiries and the lion's share of those are in the process that I just described. Uh, I also want to note that uh with my thanks, uh Diane and Phyllis were also working uh on Saturday uh to uh catch up because uh even though the office is closed to the public, I know the board's aware that uh the workload doesn't slow down. We continue to have a large number of phone calls and emails that are important to continue to be addressed as well as preparations uh for this important virtual meeting of the board, which Diane handles routinely. So my compliments and thanks to our colleagues in the office for their fine work and that's the status of where we are. And I know I have uh Chief Small and Chief Dunn here along with Scott McGann. And uh their three departments are among those that are heavily involved in the review of all these applications along with uh others like building and uh where it's appropriate uh conservation, uh et cetera. So it's a uh also a planning, Tom Bott and uh zoning board of appeals, Noreen as well is involved in this. So great uh team and partnership, ship effort to make certain that we have all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. And that's going to uh continue uh as the board had ordained at your last meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm remiss in not also thanking uh uh Town Council Frank Duffy and Associate Town Council, Iry Mullen for their extraordinary work there. A absolutely critical part of this review process as well. And I'm very grateful to them for that.
Great. Thank you. So what I think I'd like to do is maybe just see if um, you know, we've kind of gone through a full week really, because a lot of places were ready to go and opened up last Monday. Others throughout the week as the week went on. Um, so I would love to just hear um if any uh either of the chiefs or um Scott have any general or specific comments about the, anything they've seen or concerns that they have so far. Um, so maybe I'll start with Scott since you're the first one who comes up on my screen.
Yeah, my only thing is um, the state says six feet between tables. But somebody my size back to back with someone else, a table six feet apart would mean I'm touching the back of the person next to me. Right? So the idea and the state actually admitted a little bit of a mistake. It really should be six feet between parts. So that's the one thing I've taken a comment. So if you're in a round table next to a round table, if Chief Dunn is back to back to me, you know, then we're, we're not going to be six feet. So that's one of my comments. Um tents are fine as far as the health department's concerned. Uh, as long as less than 50% of the sides are enclosed, less than 50%, so not full enclosure. And there's corridors so that when you set up the tables, there's ways that patrons can come in and out without being too close to the tables. Those are my main comments. I've been sort of general comments on most um uh applications. So those are the three things that I mainly-
Okay. Great. Chief Small?
So far, most of what we're seeing is, is they're all been pretty good. Uh, we, I haven't had any, any overriding concerns with any of them. The, the only thing that we're consistently recommending is for the, some of the places that are putting seating out in parking areas. Uh, if, you know, again, I can't uh, you know, it's, it's not a uh, you know, I don't have veto authority, but we're strongly recommending is robust a barrier between any vehicular traffic and the potential seating areas. Uh, and some of the places that have come across are doing really well with Jersey barriers or with some type of a concrete barrier, but some are you know, they're less than what I would call robust. Uh, that's ultimately, I think it's going to be up to the businesses to uh, you know, be responsible for their property and up to the people that uh want to sit there. But other than that, we have, of all the ones that I've seen uh in the last, which has been many that we've recommended, we, we haven't had any issues.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Chief Dunn?
Yeah, I would echo uh Chief Small's said as far as, you know, barriers for pedestrians and uh, you know, patrons and vehicles. Uh, did have a concerns this weekend about alcohol being served um beyond what the limits of the licensing's were. And um, some situations like that, but we dealt with that with the, with the uh owner of the business and um we'll forward some of those, that information to the board as well.
Right. Thank you. Um, I, you know, I, I will say, Doug, are you raising, go ahead, Doug Jones?
We've also heard some concerns about um passageways or walkways being blocked off by tables. Have we heard complaints about that or is there? Are you finding that to be the case that people actually can't walk past the restaurants because the tables are in the way?
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Suso, and then Chief, other the chiefs.
Uh, certainly I'm, I'm happy to comment on that. I, I do want to say that um we're very gratified that to date the, the lion's share of our uh restaurant operators have been uh conscientious and uh cautious. And uh where we've had follow-up questions or, or concerns, they have responded. Uh, there was a a notable exception and I won't mention any further details on that. Uh, I can get that privately to the board. Uh, outside of this, outside of this meeting because I'm confident that uh that's going to be corrected as part of the process. But uh where we did have uh uh issues, uh, we've gotten a few emails uh about uh the fact that uh we had an insufficiently wide corridors maintained for the public to readily access sidewalk uh in, in, in a particular location. And uh, we've interacted with the uh, uh business in regard to that. And that is a uh, uh work still in progress.
And if, and I can just add to that because I, I was part of some discussions. I went onsite to some places this weekend because I just felt it was better for me to see with my own eyes the concerns that I had received from um individuals, some emails and some phone calls. Um, and so I think one concern is that space of the corridor. Sort of tangentially related to that is what Scott is raising, which is, you know, even if the corridor is there and people can get through, if, you know, when people are eating their meals, they don't have masks on because they're eating. And so if where they're walking is, you know, the corridor, the person passing you is a foot away, that's really, you know, not what we're, I, I know we can, the people on the sidewalks can have on their masks, but we're really getting into some, um, I think, you know, potentially troubling. And that was some of the emails we got that folks were, felt very uncomfortable as they traversed some parts of the sidewalk because they felt it was so narrow with people eating their meals without masks on that they felt uncomfortable. Um, I would agree with Mr. Suso. In a large part, we, we got some positive responses and I think that we, you know, as it's not, you know, not a surprise that we have to work through some of this. It's all new to everyone and hopefully we can um, you know, tweak what is maybe potentially problematic and move forward. Um, but essentially the complaints were about um mostly passage on the sidewalk um and some concern. I know even as, as late as tonight, I saw some concern from folks um who want us to remind the public that even though we're in this new phase, social distancing, masks, still, you know, really maintaining that distance between you and other people, keeping your masks on. Um, that, you know, folks were a little bit surprised as they went out over the weekend with the nice weather to see a lot of people without masks on. Um, as they uh sort of went about their business, not just at restaurants. So just a reminder to the public that we are, um, you know, we're still in a phase where um all of the recommendations are to continue with social distancing, continue to use that, to continue to use your masks when you can't uh distance from folks. Um, uh, either Chief want to comment on the question about that Doug Jones raised about concerns? Chief Dunn?
Uh, yeah, we, we had similar ones and, and we had uh um officers going to address it. One thing I also want to bring up to the board is uh we had uh some emails and some text messages about a pop-up car show that uh occurred in town. And, and, and the chief complaint on it was that uh there was no social distancing and no masks. Uh, the lieutenant went, spoke with the organizer and uh advised him also about the governor's order about groups larger than 10 gathering and they are social distancing and, and they shut it down.
Right. Thank you. Doug Brown, I saw your hand up.
Just think uh, we need to bear in mind uh, people are coming from other states where they might not even have rules about social distancing. Some, some states are more lenient than others. Some have put the masks away and just said, let's, let's party. So they're coming in here and we have to remind them. And it might be down to the local citizen to just remind a person and say, hey, you know, you're supposed to be uh, be more careful. It's a lot to, to ask of people, but I guess that's what we might have to do.
Yeah, or just, I know we have the electronic boards reminding people. So wherever we can kind of keep up that education. And I think all of the establishments that I've seen have up the required signs saying no patrons unless you have a mask on. Um, you know, but of course, then once you sit down to eat, it's a bit of a different scenario, which is obviously as Scott's noting, why the governor has those larger spaces in between tables because it's a recognition that you are not eating your meal with your mask on. So um, just continuing to be vigilant and working. Um, you know, the goal here is, and I think that the town has done a great job working with businesses, not trying to come down hard on anybody because we know this is a huge financial burden to small businesses to, to put all of these um new regulations in place. It's a huge change for their staff. Um, but obviously ultimately, you know, we've said this before, good health really can translate into good economy. So if we don't have to shut down again or become restrictive again, uh that benefits everyone. And obviously that's the goal here. Um, so anything else from, yep, Doug Brown?
So um, we know that we've got this uh streamlined process for uh regular restaurants who don't have outdoor seating to apply for the outdoor seating. But restaurants that do have existing outdoor seating seem to be now taking a little more latitude. Do we have any um ability to offer them additional space? Other alternatives other than maybe crowding a sidewalk?
Um, that's part of what they could apply for. I mean, even if you have outdoor space, you could apply just like anyone else does for a um, you know, a supplement to that or a change of how you're going to utilize that. So um, I think the chamber has sent out the message and we'll say it again. Excuse me, regardless of whether you have outdoor space that you can utilize, um, or you are, you know, and you want to add to that, or you don't have any and you're trying to just create that and that's what the, the permit is for. Um, you know, put that plan together, go through the checklist and provide all of that information to the town and they can take a look at that. Um, and so really encouraging people to do that sooner rather than later because obviously it does take a little bit of time to go through all the steps. Okay. Uh, before we let um Chief Small go, um, I did ask him if this was okay. So I would never spring it, anything on him, but just wanted to recognize that we did receive um, the announcement from the chief that um he is going to retire. And um, well, it is certainly well deserved after three decades, more than three decades of um service. Uh, we are certainly going to miss your, your leadership. Um, I think everyone here shares the sentiment that you are the kind of person who um, you know, in the last four and a half years, you've really brought um, you know, to the department, that connection with um, the firefighters and really being able to, you know, advocate for them while at the same time really um, building up a great uh rapport with the town. Um, and really getting, supporting your firefighters, um, and getting the best services for our residents here in town. So it's well deserved, but we certainly um are going to miss you. And although you live in town, so hopefully we'll see you out and about. Uh, but we just wanted to re- recognize your service and thank you.
Appreciate that. Uh, everything that's happened in the last four years is because of a, an enormous amount of collaboration with people that had a common goal, but whether it be the town, you folks and the town representatives and the firefighters union that had a common goal and put their head together toward a common goal. And uh, it's not anything that I did, you know, individually. I'll take the, the thanks and pass that on to the troops, but I'm uh, I'm not slacking. I'm not going anywhere. I'm here to the end. We got a lot going on the next two weeks. Uh, and then we've got the month of July to really work out some kinks with uh some of the changes we're making in the next two weeks. So I appreciate that. Uh, I will be uh, but you know, I'm in this with both feet. I'm committed to the very end and we got a lot of work to do and we'll get it done and we'll go from there.
Great. Thank you, Chief.
Chief, I guess you always remember that's the guy who uh hit that softball out of the park with the uh staffing plan. So thank you for putting that together and showing us what it really takes to staff our department correctly.
You know, it, 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 support of the town, uh especially you know, with the override during the global pandemic, with the economic uncertainty there really quite frankly blew me away. And uh, we, we're so grateful. But again, it was support of the town. It's been support of the political leadership. It's been the willingness of everybody on every side of that issue to bend a little bit. And, and uh, you know, for the town to pony up some money and for the firefighters union to look at a different way of doing things. This really is the, it's the biggest change the department's had really since 1897, when the town said, we'll give you 700 bucks for a fire department. It's the biggest operational change in the history of the fire department. And it's taken an awful lot of hard work and collaboration amongst all the parties involved to get it done. So uh, we, we're got two weeks to get that rolled out. We're, we're moving full speed ahead. And then uh, we'll see what, you know, we'll see what July brings. Uh, it might not be a bad time to really test it where, you know, where July is probably going to be a little more subtle this year than a typical July without all the big events in town. But it's still July. Our, we're seeing our call volume already start to get back to almost, you know, we get to summer levels. So, but I, I appreciate that. But it's, and I'll pass it on to the troops. It's, it's, it's above the, the group.
Thank you. Well, you're, you're humble and we are, we know you're a big part of it regardless of what you say. So but um, Julian, did you um just want to talk a little bit about the, so folks understand what the process is coming forward? Um, we have obviously this huge change, which I think frankly is, is um, going to be such a great legacy for Chief Small's tenure to really uh, that, that transition and that change is enormous and such a benefit to the town in terms of um increased service, you know, value of service. Um, and obviously that's a big change and um, so just so folks understand what the process is going forward.
Certainly, Madam Chair, happy to do so. Um, as Chief Small's aware, um, we have a civil service process that we deal with when it comes time to uh pursue a successor chief. In fact, um Mike's very familiar with the process because he was deputy chief uh when Chief Sullivan retired and he was one of the uh applicants thankfully for the position of chief that went through a civil service approved assessment center uh process and um, out of that process, I was pleased to uh recommend Chief Small for now Chief Small, but at that time Deputy Chief Small uh for his current appointment. So uh we will be following because we are a civil service uh, uh town- current appointment. So we will be following because we are a civil service town in the fire department. We will be following the civil service rules. We'll be, we're all filing the paperwork for the requisite approval from the state to hold an assessment center process to select the chief small successor. That is a process that takes some time to get the necessary approvals. We bring in an outside assessing firm that works with the candidates for the position. Again, it's similar process to the one we followed almost five years ago now. And the likelihood is great because of the timetable that is required to complete this process. We know this by experience that I'll be working with an acting chief, as was the case prior to Chief Small's appointment, until we complete that process and we have the assessment center concluded and the final recommendations that come to me as town manager. And ultimately I bring a recommendation to this select board for your affirmation to have a permanent successor for Chief Small.
Great, thank you. So, you know, I think it goes without saying that, you know, the chief is really at the top of just in a really wonderful group of men and women. And so the level of service we'll continue to have in that interim period. I don't think anyone should be worried that it's going to be anything less than the excellent service that we currently have. There's a lot of folks there with really great experience and we, you know, we anticipate that they'll guide us through that, that interim period without really any interruption. So again, thank you, Chief, and we look forward to seeing what you go on to next. So many boards that you could be a part of in your future, so.
I just heard my wife laugh out loud in the corner, around the corner of the room. So, well, we'll take it, take it one month at a time, but we're not going anywhere. I'll be around. So thanks to all. It's been the singular honor of my life to be able to have been in this position and I appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Well done.
So I think in terms of any further discussion about COVID, I want to be able to let the Chiefs go and Scott McGann unless anyone has any specific questions. Okay, so thank you to Chief Dunn, Chief Small and to Scott McGann for participating tonight and sharing that insight. Very helpful. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, next we have a discussion and consideration to approve proposed Phase Two solar at the Falmouth landfill. So before we start this, we did have a last minute request from EDIC to actually put this over because they were hoping for their council and correct me if I get this wrong, Julian, but for their council to be able to have further discussion with town council about the potential for the loan program that we talked about back in May, whether or not there's a need for special legislation, whether or not there's a need for a town meeting vote, which, you know, the recommendation from our town council is that there's a requirement for both of those things in order for EDIC to be able to make the loans in the way that we discussed. So before we go down the road of talking about the proposed Phase Two, I would like to hear from this board whether or not, what your feeling is about the request to postpone to a later date in order to allow for that conversation. Go ahead, Doug.
I would just say if they feel like they need more time, why wouldn't we give that to them? It's not, it's not urgent. I mean, we know that we need this, but one more week is not going to break the deal. More information is better.
All right, Doug Jones, I saw your hand up.
Well, I guess I'm a little bit taken back because the EDIC pushed us really quick and said that they had to deal with this right away and forced us to handle this way faster than we wanted to. They then published something in the paper without communicating with our town council and put us in this position. And now I actually think we have a pretty good proposal to go forward with that splits the revenue correctly, 50% each way. And I guess I'm prepared to move forward with going the way we did with Phase One and Phase Two. I'm actually wondering why in Phase Two, we need to have a middleman. It seems to me it certainly could be something that the town just dealt with citizens corporation directly and not use the EDIC for. So I'm inclined to continue with the way we set it up.
Okay. Sam Patterson?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think the push was really trying to help out the citizens in town, you know, our small businesses, to try to be in a position to give them a little bit of a cushion through the transition period here. I mean, they've been hurting for the last three months and, you know, I've heard from a number of them, I mean, and they're desperate, you know. So I, I think that was the push on their part. Now, did they anticipate all the hurdles that we're going to have to get over? I don't think so. And so I really appreciate town council, both town councillors. And, and then they retained KP, KP law to weigh in on it as well. And so, you know, I think they're trying to look out for trying to support the citizens. So I'm giving them credit for trying to come in there to offer some kind of, you know, transitional aid, financial aid.
Hi. Nancy, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry. I didn't know if I missed.
No, I didn't know.
Okay, Mr. Suso or, or Mr. Duffy, did you want to weigh in on this?
Could I perhaps comment? Then I defer to Town Council Frank Duffy. I just wanted to advise the board that we had consistently been urged by both Citizens Energy and EDIC that this absolutely had to be adopted by the select board in the month of June. Could not go beyond June for reasons apparently related to Citizens Energy's timetable. We were told some potential changes in federal legislation and tax credits made it urgent to move forward. And I, I will tell you that, and I appreciate it very much, Town Council Frank Duffy worked overtime to try to respond to that demand that we had received and that was communicated also to one or more members of this board consistently. And now that we have a package and I believe there was a, an email forwarded to the board with suggestions from town council on how you could cooperate with that original request to have something affirmed in June. I just want to remind the board that your next regularly scheduled meeting is July 13th. And when, originally I was asked to try and bring this to the board at your meeting of June 1st, you know, and here we are the 15th, again, to give Frank and also working with Iri adequate time to, to respond to the documents that were coming his way with the understanding that Phase Two solar was, we had understood a significant priority. So I want to defer to Frank. I also want to acknowledge that outside council that was secured could have at any time spoken to Town Council Duffy. I don't know that that ever occurred. They issued a standalone opinion and the suggestion that after publicizing that opinion and making frankly some comments in the local paper about characterizing Town Council Duffy's assessment of the legal situation, now it's suggested that maybe outside councils should speak to Frank Duffy. I just think it's, it, it's a little dated to suggest that that should occur now when it didn't occur before. And Frank, I know is, is continues to be available to talk to any attorney that inquires and consists, has been consistently so, but provide an opinion to this board. And I, I believe there's some disagreement with that opinion. And now suddenly June is not an urgent date anymore. And I, as I told representative from the EDIC that reached out to me, I find that whole process with the last minute request to delay a bit confusing from what we were told initially. So I'd be remiss if I didn't so indicate to this board and I'll defer to Frank for his, any comments he may have.
Frank?
Well, thank you, Megan. Well, as Julian has reported to you, this project has been reported to us as being urgent. There's a time sensitivity to it. I just, it has to be completed this calendar year for various reasons. So we've been trying to get this resolved. And everything was going along fairly well until about a month ago, when the EDIC came up with the idea of trying to coordinate the approval of the solar project with funding the recovery loan program. And since then, it's really kind of ground to a halt. And so I realized that you were going to be in a dilemma. And so today I took some time when I realized that we were, two things, one, we were approaching the deadline that had been represented to us in the past, and also the fact that you weren't going to be meeting for another month in public, that I crafted a couple of motions for you to take some action on these documents that you're being asked to approve. And with respect to the intergovernmental agreement, I, I have a motion which I presented to you that will allow you to go ahead and approve the intergovernmental agreement as originally proposed and reserve the right, or acknowledge, rather, acknowledge that the EDIC has this outstanding request to renegotiate the rent, that they can come forward at an appropriate time when the recovery loan program has been approved and its details are known. And at that time, the select board will defer its decision until such time as the details about the recovery loan program are known and evaluated and the town's authority to contribute to them have been confirmed. So I thought I was trying to please everybody, if that's possible, to allow the board of selection to take some action, to allow Citizens Energy to go ahead and get their financing and get this project underway, and also to offer some assurance to the EDIC that we're not cutting them out. They can come back when they have everything together.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from the board? I know that we received those, I believe this afternoon. Mr. Suso, those were sent out to everyone, correct?
Yes, the, the suggestions by Frank for three, potentially three motions by the board were sent to others. We also have a, it can be put up on the screen if the board would prefer. We have those available as well.
That's okay. I, I think, you know, I think we get the gist of it. I'd rather just sort of have a conversation about in general what the board's feeling is, you know, in, go ahead, Doug.
So my initial comment was assuming that the two councils were in the midst of working things out and getting down to the minor details, but there's really been no outreach and Mr. Duffy's got this ready to go, which I did read before the meeting. So I've changed my opinion now. I think we should move forward.
I mean, I think that Frank strikes a nice balance where we, we move forward with, you know, what has been on the table for a while, but reserve that option to, to go ahead and take a look at it if those, you know, hurdles are met. And we certainly, I don't think we have anyone from EDIC, doesn't seem that they are in the panelists or attendees, but obviously I think it goes without saying and Frank and Iri both know that, you know, anytime they're, they're contacted by an attorney or anyone else for that matter to, you know, work on behalf of a potential program for the residents of the town, that that's something that they're both willing to do and are going to go forward and stand willing and able to have that conversation. So I think that as long as Frank, you're, you're confident that that vote, the way you've drafted it, doesn't hinder, I mean, it still requires, we still have the other two issues, which would be special legislation and a vote of town meeting from your perspective, but those would be handled as they came forward if, if they were able to be, you know, if the special legislation was able to go forward and be approved, it would then be something that would come back to this board and then potentially town meeting.
That is correct. I, I tried to leave everybody with the available option, at the same time allowing the project to go forward based upon the representation that there's a time constraint here that has to be observed.
Thank you. Any further comments from the board? I don't think, I don't see any public comments from anyone. Okay, what is the pleasure of this board?
I'd make the following motion. This is dealing with the intergovernmental agreement. And I move the approval of the intergovernmental agreement by and between the town of Falmouth and the Falmouth Economic Development Industrial Corporation, the EDIC, for the Phase Two area of the solar project at Town's Cap landfill, being 18.8 plus or minus acres for a term of 25 years and for rent equal to 50% of the rent to be received by the EDIC from Falmouth Landfill Solar II LLC, selected solar development Phase Two and presently represented to be $177,650 per year. I further move that the board acknowledge that the EDIC may request an adjustment of the rent to help fund a proposed EDIC recovery loan program to assist small businesses in Falmouth with job retention and expansion associated with the COVID-19 pandemic. At such time as the recovery loan program is authorized and has legal existence with the select board's decision to be deferred until such time as the details about the recovery loan program are known and evaluated and the town's authority to contribute has been confirmed.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Sam, did you have discussion?
No, I, the only reason I didn't jump into second is that you appointed me to the EDIC board. I figured, well, maybe I should take a more nuanced position, but I actually agree with the motion.
Great, thank you. Okay, so seeing no further discussion, roll call, English Braga, aye, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Thank you. So can we make sure that we just get this, obviously it's going to be related to the EDIC, but can we make sure it's, it's very clear that our town council, both Frank and Iri stand willing and able to have further discussions about any potential with their, with their council about this proposed program and where things might go from there?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Frank. Thank you, Iri. Appreciate it. Next, we have the vote to affirm.
Two more, the two more motions.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. I don't have that piece of, that, that email. I just closed it out. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Doug, do you want to?
I guess I also want to clarify that one of the things that that last motion we did is reaffirming at least my belief that this needs to go forward with getting special legislation, both to get the authority for the EDIC to do this, and that I think that we have to go to town meeting to get authorization for this money ultimately, that those two votes has been recommended by our town council need to happen. And to not do them, I, I'm, I feel very uncomfortable. Not going to the state legislature and not going to town meeting for, move forward with these, these plans.
Patterson, second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, and just to note that we have received input from individuals in the town concerned with that exact piece, mostly the town meeting component. That town meeting has voted and supported this project under certain assumptions and that, that they really do feel that that's a town meeting vote that needs to take place if those assumptions are going to change. Okay, no further discussion. So all those in favor, English Braga, aye, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Jones?
Jones, aye. Now we have two more motions dealing actually with the, the contract and sublease. So the next I move, the board acknowledged the EDIC intends to sublease the Phase Two area of the solar project at the Town's Cap landfill described in the intergovernmental agreement previously approved by this board to Falmouth Landfill Solar II LLC for the development of Phase Two of the solar project of the Town's Cap landfill and the town assents to the contract and sublease agreement as presented.
Patterson, second.
Okay, any further discussion? I have a motion in a second. Seeing none, English Braga, aye, Brown?
Aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye. In the next motion, I move the approval of the solar on bill agreement, credit agreement by and between the town of Falmouth and Falmouth Landfill Solar II LLC, whereby 50% of the, of the on bill credits generated by the operation of Phase Two solar project, the Town's Camp landfill will be sold to the town at the smart utility tariff rate less a discount of 20%. And the remaining on bill solar credits will be allocated to low income residents of the town of Falmouth.
Patterson, second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, English Braga, aye, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Okay. Now I'll say thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to vote to affirm FY 21, 2% COLA for non-union employees. Mr. Suso, do you want to just remind folks that this is something we do yearly and just explain what it is?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. As you noted, each year we come to the board about this time, asking for asking for the board's consideration of extending the cost of living adjustment to the town's non-union employees. That appears in the collective bargaining agreements for our unionized employees and that is, of course, 2% as of July 1 for fiscal year 21 and would ask the board's consideration of so affirming.
Any questions?
I move that we affirm the fiscal year 21, 2% COLA for non-union employees.
Patterson, second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Motion in a second. Seeing none? Excuse me. English Braga, aye, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Great. Thank you.
On behalf of all employees, thank you to the members of the board.
Thank you. Okay, meetings of minutes, public session, June 1, 2020. Any corrections?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
The only thing that I see that I would recommend, there are edits throughout these minutes that have not been implemented, but I guess recommended by somebody that reviewed them. So I just think that they should be implemented in the final. And the other thing is just, I guess, as a technical letter I passed myself, acronyms like for instance, select board should be defined up in the front of the document. So my recommendation would be if you look at the first page under two where it says real-time public comment can be addressed to be the select board, then we should put in parentheses, capital S, capital B. And then the S B later on is defined upfront. They could even do it a couple of times at the beginning of the document so people are conditioned. But other than that, I would, I like the edits that are suggested in our copy and I recommend that we prove this as edited and release.
One very trivial question, but a little bit relevant. The, on the first page, the Zoom address, I think it still is the BOSS. Is it still the Zoom address we use? They actually haven't changed that one because that's the way I logged in today was going to that Zoom address.
Yes, that is good point that I think probably someone went through and auto-corrected it. But yes, it is not, it should not be that first under A Zoom and login instructions should not be changed to SB because it should be BOSS. Thank you.
For people in the future to log into that, they need to follow that address.
Correct. Great, thank you. So with that correction and with the edits as noted and with the acronyms displayed as Mr. Patterson has pointed out, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second?
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor of approving the minutes? English Braga, aye, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
Jones?
Jones, aye.
Okay. Any individual selection reports? Mr. Patterson?
Three meetings that I went to that I want to just note. First was the EDIC meeting, which I don't know that I was your official representative or not. I don't really figure that out yet, but I did it, attended. And one of the things I can point out, a couple of things, they are moving forward on a removal energy grant application that they're submitting. They would like the board to be thinking about future point about diversifying the membership of the EDIC board. That was just a general comment that was made during the meeting. The Falmouth Bus Station is now open and operating. I actually went to the station grill last week on Friday. And I think they probably would like people to know that, certainly the people that operate that grill would like people to know about it. And it's very nicely done and I can assure you that it's following all the COVID-19 restrictions to make sure that any chances of infection are extremely small. And then the last thing I might mention is that COVID-19 pandemic has slowed down the implementation of the broadband project for Main Street. They've hoped to get as many as 80 commercial entities participating in that. I think they've gotten 20 people signed up. So it's just kind of slowed down understandably. That project is being done in conjunction with Open Cape. And hopefully we'll keep on moving because there's no question that businesses could benefit from that much faster service. I might say along with Senator Moran, listened to the Zoom meeting for the Cape Cod and Islands Selectment Counselors Association meeting on this past Friday. I couldn't get in on the first 30 minutes because I couldn't figure out how to find the link. Something technology threw a curve at me. I did manage to get the last, there's a new president, Janet Reiker, I think is her last name. Excuse me. She's from Wellfleet, is now the new president of the CCI SCA. There were, was a lot of discussion about the same issues that we're dealing with as a town. I think we probably are right out in the front from what I'm hearing in terms of facing things like town meetings and how they work, their transactions. There's a lot of sharing of thoughts in this forum, which is a good function for the forum. I would say that Sandwich has already held a town meeting and they did it indoors. So apparently they found a space where they could keep people distancing. They used to shorten the agenda as well. And I guess all of us will be looking at maybe subsequent special town meetings to clean up some of the items that we felt like we shouldn't be doing at the first meeting. One of the things that Sandwich representative said was be careful about shortening agendas and not posting them. It's okay to do that with a seven-day prior publication according to the state regulations that have been rolled out in answer to the COVID-19. So just a hint. And a casual one, of course, Orleans and those towns along the Outer Cape have the shark problems. And one of the things that they were suggesting is that they're hiring college students who actually have already had EMT training. So they can be first responders on a little more timely basis in case somebody actually is bitten by a shark or any other problem for that matter. And then the last meeting I attended or by Zoom, all these via Zoom, is the school committee meeting. And of course, just pointing out what I think everybody realizes that the students and teachers are really challenged by the online learning. Very difficult when you can't have a one-on-one close relationship, physical relationship between teachers and students. And I've heard that from local neighborhood children as well, that they don't like online learning. Essentially, they actually enjoyed being in the classroom with the teacher and with their other other fellow students. Staff is working very hard to develop a productive routine and I've heard some teachers say things have gotten better. Students and teachers together have kind of learned to get into a routine. But there were comments were made that, you know, there's an awful lot of children who really kind of have dropped out of the learning process. I mean, very difficult, I guess, to expect that some of the students would be able to continue to progress in the online learning routine. And then the last thing is to point out superintendent Duer mentioned that the staff is working very hard to try to anticipate what restrictions will be in the fall and how the staff can structure the learning experience to take advantage of whatever opportunities they have. Whether it be limited classroom sizes and multiple shifts per day so they can have half the number of students in a classroom and still have that experience in a properly controlled environment to limit any spread of the COVID-19 virus. So those are just the highlights of what was discussed. I'll pass those on to you. And, you know, hopefully it makes sense, but I was impressed, there's no there's no denial of what the challenges are going to be coming up. And I think, you know, it's bothering me as a retired teacher to think about the setback in learning that students are bound to be experiencing right now. Certainly, the meeting, the Massachusetts Curriculum and Frameworks and Standards has been relaxed. But the, you know, we have students that pay for that in the long run in terms of preparation for their post-high school careers and education programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Just, you know, and not just the academics, but all of that social development that's really just an enormous part of what takes place in schools and and depending on the age of the child is almost as important as the academics, you know, really laying those foundations for some of that developmental, those developmental stages that, you know, kids are really struggling with because it's been so disruptive. So we certainly, it's going to be a tough challenge for every community. And I know we'll be hearing more about it from our superintendent and our school committee.
But I just mentioned that that is another thing that they were talking about, how guidance counselors and adjustment counselors are trying to help parents working with students when these social emotional problems emerge. So and then, of course, I go beyond that and that's the physical needs. And the school lunch programs are still being handled and kids' meals are still being passed out so that families get weekends worth of food so that the families themselves have enough to eat over the weekend. So there's a lot of things going on in the school department. And we'd be pretty proud of how our money, our tax money is being invested.
Thank you. Anyone else with any updates at this point in time? Okay, Mr. Suso, town manager's report?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to, I detached to my report to selectman and an email, an earlier email regarding the position of sealer of weights and measures. You know, in a nutshell, the sealer position had been overlooked for any cost of living adjustments going back to 2009. And the compensation at that time was $10,400. And in the essentially 11 years that's ensued with 2% cost of living adjustments, my intention is to adjust that upward to $13,000 annually from the $10,400 that was in place in 2009. And I wanted to alert the board members to that. I think it is well-deserved for our part-time sealer of weights and measures and should be effective with this calendar year. And I know that an email that I has transmitted gave some further details on that, Madam Chair and members of the board. And I wanted to advise you of that at this meeting, that that would be taking place as well.
Any questions? Sorry, any questions for Mr. Suso on that? Okay, thank you. And then update, oh, we sort of let the, sorry, go ahead.
I had a couple other items, Madam Chair. Wanted to the members of the board will recall you authorized the filing of a community development block grant COVID-19 application at a recent meeting. And I wanted to confirm that that has been filed timely with the state funding agency. We are optimistic. See funding, but we're hoping so. And we worked with the EDIC, with the planning department and with others in the town to assemble that timely. And it would provide some microeconomic funding assistance for qualified small businesses who are affected by COVID-19 as well as provide some social service supplementary funding through the Falmouth Service Center if we're fortunate enough to receive support for that application. So that has been filed. We'll keep members of the board apprised as to what we hear. I also wanted, Madam Chair, to confirm that town meeting convenes at 6:00 PM next Monday, June 22 at the high school stadium. We have conducted a walkthrough with the town moderator, town clerk, school department representatives and others to ensure that the appropriate setup will be in place for the shortened town meeting set for that date. And we're keeping our fingers crossed on the weather report. Also, the board's annual strategic plan retreat is tentatively scheduled for Monday, June 29. More information on that as we explore options for potential venue. And your next regular business meeting, given the upcoming 4th of July holiday, is Monday, July 13. And that concludes my report. Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Suso. And one thing, just to keep in mind that one of the things we can consider is whether or not there's an ability to do our retreat with social distancing but in person. Given that we're not a large group of people, obviously it's open to the public, but historically we really haven't had many individuals. So with staff and with the board, there's, you know, generally about eight individuals, the five members of the board, Julian, Peter, Jennifer. You know, I know Greg joined us last year to talk about some tech issues, but in general, it's underneath that 10-person number and has been even when we've had a guest or two. And so just something to think about, we can, Mr. Suso is going to take a look at some spaces. It just seems that that ebb and flow and that really rigorous discussion that happens at strategic planning is just much harder to do in this setting. And given that we can likely find a space where we can socially distance and still have a conversation, it's just something for us to think about. But obviously, we need to look at spaces that can accommodate that. And then, you know, we can, we can just talk about that further as to whether or not what people are comfortable with. Okay. Anything further? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move re-adjourn, Jones?
Patterson, second.
Okay. All those in favor, English Braga, aye, Brown?
Brown, aye.
Taylor?
Taylor, aye.
Thank you. Patterson?
Patterson, aye.
And Jones?
Jones, aye.
Thank you all. And as always, thank you to our IT staff and to Peter Johnson Saab for being in the background and making this work. Thank you all. Have a good night.